The Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Warren may have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Giomi.
Here.
Supervisor White.
Here.
Supervisor Horton. Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Mayor Bagwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're on to, and she's already seated and ready to go. We're on to our invocation. Ms. Locke, would you please enlighten us this morning?
The Bible says in Matthew 6:33, "But seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all these things will be added to you." Almighty God, Father in heaven, we give you thanks for today. Lord, grant us wisdom to see clearly and strength to act courageously. Transform our hearts by the power of the gospel, so we may love and seek you first and love others as ourselves. May we live with open hands, being available to you to receive all you have for us, but also that we may give to others. May we be blessed with compassion and fervent caring for the people of our great community, Carson City. May we be blessed with understanding and wisdom and grace. May we listen attentively, pursue peace faithfully, and love generously. Bless our families, our coworkers, and to all those in attendance here today. We pray for your continued protection and grace for those who serve in harm's way. We pray for our mayor, our Board of Supervisors, our sheriff, and Sheriff's Department, our fire department, and our first responders. Great is your faithfulness, oh Lord. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for that. Ms. Paulson, it is your last meeting. Would you do us the honor of the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Did you see if I have any sign up sheet? We're now going to move to opening public comment, which is Agenda Item Number Five. See, do we have anyone signed up? We don't have anyone signed up, but I'll ask just in case. Okay, then we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is approval of our minutes of May 15th and May 27th. Do I have any corrections to the May 15th? I'll accept a motion, please.
I move to approve the Board of Supervisors' meeting for May 15 and May 27, 2025. It's presented.
I second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Giomi and a second by Supervisor Shutey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was four yeses. We're now going to go to the Length of Service Award, so if you'll join me on the floor and on the video. We'll get this done. Good morning. All right. I still can't believe this. I've been seeing a lot of him lately. Where is he? Where's Matt? Oh, there he is in the back. Come on up here, Matt. Mister Extraordinaire, building on ticket booths and leadership classes and all that good kind of stuff. Everybody, but I can't believe it. Twenty years? I know, right? I'm like, twenty years, still looks like a young'un. We really want to thank you for your service, though. It's so important and you're just such an integral part of the community. Thank you.
Yeah, WoW is everything for, it's lieutenant right now, but we're right here on the verge. He got promoted out at the fireworks last year, basically. We had a lot of fun with that. Matt has, he's currently assigned over the detention center, but he has also overseen, supervised the School Resource Officer Program, the motor units. He's done it all, been through everything, which obviously is why he has been promoted so quickly. And Matt, I couldn't be more happy with you and your family. You take care of them so well. You're a great, great model for law enforcement, so congratulations.
Okay, and is Jason Bueno here? Jason, oh, there he is. Twenty years for you too? I'm telling you, that's a testament in the Sheriff's Department that they, I don't want to say last forever, because that didn't sound very good, but that they stick around. We have longevity, so, aw, look at this. What's your name?
Jack.
Jack?
Faith.
And faith? Aw, and this is Dad, right? This is a pretty proud moment, huh? I think it's pretty, and Aunt, I don't, where is my common thing where I get to ask you for twenty more years? Right? Retired, well, thank you for your service, right? How could we say anything different, so?
Yeah, twenty years on top of military service. We're very, very proud of those folks that are veterans. They come into the line of law enforcement. They dedicate their lives. Their families are very, very so important to these folks. And Jason, we couldn't be more proud of you. Congratulations on your twenty years. Thank you.
Oh, no, stay there. You can't leave because we have to do pictures or it's not real. Yeah. Okay, and another. How about Deputy Sheriff Jacob Van, okay, pronounce it. Van Buig? Okay, that, only five years, you know, a little, you know, a little week here, so I do get the, I know, I get to challenge this one, right? You love it here and you're never leaving us. It's on record, you know, it counts. Thank you so much for your service. It's so appreciated.
Assigned to the Patrol Division. Lord Almighty, we ask him very, very much. Family onboard, family inside of our department. We call it family. In his case, it truly is family. Father is a civilian over in our detention center, working projects that actually came through the board. Just a fantastic gentleman here. Thank you and congratulations.
I'm sorry. We're really on the Sheriff's Department this morning for some reason. Did you hire them all the same day or something? What's going on around here? Okay, how about Delia Rodriguez, Sheriff's Support Specialist? Five years. Wow. Tell us a little bit. What do you do?
I work at the front counter.
Front counter, helping all the people coming in needing help of all different sorts. Well, thank you for your service. We really appreciate it. Twenty more, twenty-five? This isn't working out, you guys. She's saying no. I got a yes down there. A while.
But you're already old.
She said she's already old.
She's not. She's got plenty left in. Delia is very special to us, and all of us department heads, we have those people that the public comes in first contact with. And those folks are probably the most challenged, and Delia does it so well. You know, affectionately, I wasn't going to do this, but I'm going to do it anyways. Affectionately, I refer to her as Grandma, because she cares so much about every single person who walks into the sheriff's office and goes to such lengths to get them to the best of her ability, what they need. And when you talk about folks like this, that first image of our departments is set by people like Delia. Congratulations on five years. We love you so much. Thank you.
All heart. Thank you. Okay, well, I have one that's not the sheriff's office. So come on up, Joe Reyna, our Water Operations Supervisor. Fifteen years. Wow. It's so important and people take it so for granted that we'll have clean water, but this is who makes it happen, so thank you for your service.
Thank you. So fifteen years has been great so far. He hasn't been paid for a while, but he keeps showing up anyway. So, no, Joe's been with us. He's kind of the heart and soul of our water group right now. He started with us as a seasonal and stuck with us, which is great. He is, anything water, and he's kind of, he's one of those go-to people to where if he needs something done, figured out, needs some research, whether it be the new folks that we have or some of our senior folks, he's always there for you. When I started out as the construction manager, I came in a couple of years after he did, so he was still the new guy. So he dealt with me a lot because contractors were breaking stuff, couldn't find stuff and whatnot. And he was always there to give us input, help us out, educate us, let us know why we did things, why we shouldn't do things. So Joe's been a great hand to date, so appreciate it. Looking for, yeah, a long time more. Long time. He's not going anywhere anytime soon.
All right. How about, do we have some more family or friends or people from the office that want to join in on the picture? Come on in. It's really, come on, that's what it's all about. Hi. A mystery school. Come on, I love it. That's what it's all about. Come on. Do you have a buddy too? Come on. Come on, get in. It's a family. I think it's important that, right? And again, thank you all for your service to the community. Thank you so much. Really wonderful. Oh, go, go ahead. Absolutely. We can. Absolutely. So I'm like, I gotta start wearing them. Okay, seven, eight. All right, we're ready to move to our consent agenda. Did any member need an item? I didn't receive anybody, no requests. Okay, I'll accept a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. Is that you, Stacy? That's your job. Let's go.
I'm ready. I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 8A, 8B, 9A, 9B, with Resolution Number 2025-R-12, 10A, 11A, 11B, 11C, 12A, 13A, 14A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, 15A with Resolution Number 2025-R-13, and only 16A, all as presented.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor White to approve those items on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, that was four yeses. Okay, let me just let a little clear out and see. I'm going to go ahead and take Agenda Item 18B next instead of 18A, just because the library interviews can take a while. Just double check really quick. I thought they were going to come on this one, but let's just double check there. Couldn't find a seat for a moment. And see. No, we're going to move on now. Okay, we're going to do Agenda Item 18B, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt on Second Reading Bill Number 102. Ms. Warren, may I have the title, please?
Ordinance 2025-2, Bill Number 102. An Ordinance Relating to Improvement Districts Accepting the Resignation of the Nonprofit Association Administering the Downtown Neighborhood Improvement District, Modifying the Plan for the Downtown Neighborhood Improvement District by Designating Carson City as the Administrator and Providing Other Matters Properly Relating There To.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, did we receive any additional comments or anything on this proposal? No. Any member have any questions? Last one. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll accept a motion. Supervisor Shutey.
I move to adopt on second reading, Bill Number 102, Ordinance Number 2025-2.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. We'll now move to Agenda Item 18A, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Appointment for Four Members to the Library Board of Trustees with Two Appointments for the Four-Year Terms that will expire in June of '29, One Appointment for a Partial Term of June of '26, and One for a Partial Term that will expire in June of '27. Is there people here for the appointments for the library? If you would go out into the, except for if you're the reappointments. Reappointments can stay, but the rest, if you'll go out, just because, try not to let you hear the other people's answers. Okay, now, Board, our usual is to appoint our returning members if there's no issues. Is everybody okay with we do the motion to appoint Serena and Elizabeth to their second terms? Anybody have any issues? That's fine. Somebody, okay? Just, so I'll take a motion to deal with those two. Supervisor Shutey.
I move to appoint Serena Nichols and Elizabeth Markle for full terms that will expire in June 2029.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Okay, well, let's get this started then. Let me go in order. Okay, what do we have? She's out there. Do we have Kelly? Unger? She's got to come back in with somebody to come all outside. Yeah. Okay. Hello. Hi. Come on in. Is this Kelly?
Hello. Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
Is this a good spot?
It's great. You'll need to press the button once. It'll turn the little dial will be green. That's good. So Kelly, have you been through any interviews before?
No.
That's ready. So what we're going to do is ask you a question or two, and then we'll let you have any closing statement that you would like to make or something of that nature, and then we'll move on to the next candidate. And the Library Board was popular today. I was like, wow.
I saw that out there.
I don't think we've ever had this many. This is fantastic. And so you're welcome to stay after your interview, and you can then listen to the others, or you may leave. But at the end of the interview process, we'll make our decision.
Okay.
So I'm going to just start off with a thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So I'll start the questions with, do you have a library card?
I do.
And can you tell me what the last item is that you checked out?
It's called Horse.
It's called what?
It's a book called Horse.
Horse. Oh, interesting.
The author is a Pulitzer Prize winner, not for this book, but it's a great book. It's history, it's racism, it's art, so it's.
Got it all.
Got it all, yes.
It's got it all in there. Wonderful. And then why don't you tell me just a little bit of the why?
Okay, so I retired in October from Ron Wood Family Resource Center, and what do I want to do? I don't have any grandkids, you know, how am I going to spend my time? So what am I passionate about? Democracy and people's right to learn and read and be informed. So here I am.
Okay, wonderful. All right, thank you. Supervisor Shutey.
Thank you so much for applying. So appreciated.
You're welcome, Lisa.
So I have a two-part question. One is, please share an example of where you feel the programming at the library excels and what it is that you believe makes it successful.
I would say the children's programming excels at this point, and what makes that successful is having a diverse programming. So there's computers, there's art, there's crocheting, so there's a diverse amount for children. Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, and then the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library management or programming? And if so, what idea do you have to help address a gap?
So as a patron, I'm a little bit concerned about the turnover when I go into the library. Oftentimes, the people that are working there change, so that's a concern of mine, that may be a gap, just making sure that folks that are working there feel supported. And when I read the evaluation, it looked like, you know, maybe there was some room to grow there. So I would see that as a gap. I think it's nice for the community and important for the community to see a familiar face when they come into the library, so it kind of feels like home.
Supervisor White.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you familiar with the recently expired library strategic plan?
No.
In that plan, constituents have noted ninety percent of them want more STEM, ninety-one percent want more vocational training, and ninety-two percent want more certification programs. How do you do that in a current space that's available within the library? And if that space is not adequate, how do you get more space?
So that was STEM, I'm sorry.
Vocational and certification programs.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that would be an area where outreach in the community and find who might have passions and about, around those areas and get community support. As far as space, I do know that can be a problem even just having the rooms for people that request the rooms. So I guess I would have to encourage the trustees to kind of think outside of the box and use other spaces that are available in the community.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giomi, do you have questions?
I have one question, and it is basically, can you share with me what you think the three most important functions the library carries out and your assessment of how well those are being performed?
So when I look at the ALA Bill of Rights, I do have some concerns that we're not addressing the diversity in this community, and I think that's important. Can you repeat the question again? Sorry.
Yeah, just what you think are the three most important functions the library performs?
Okay.
And how well they're performing.
Okay, diversity and meeting the needs of a diverse community that we have here in Carson City. And also making sure that small businesses that want to expand have the capacity to do that through learning and also through space. And also looking at making sure that our seniors are taken care of.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's your opportunity. If there's any closing remark or statement or something you would like to make, you're welcome.
Okay, yeah, I would be honored to have this position. I have been a library lady forever. I volunteer at browsers. I, in high school, instead of having a study hall, I volunteered at the library. In college, I worked at a biomedical library in the summers and did interlibrary loans and with journals and with books and sent them all over the country. That was in Maryland. So I've always been a library girl. Mrs. Parks could probably still picture my son Nicholas, because every time we ended up at the library, which was three or four times a week, he didn't have his shoes on. So I'm passionate about reading. I'm passionate about people's right to learn. So I'm passionate about reading, I'm passionate about people's right to learn and to have a space where they can learn. So I would be honored to fill this position, and I appreciate the interview.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, one way or the other, we really appreciate.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. It's Casey. Good morning, Casey. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. You've been through the process or heard the process and know what we're going to do.
Once or twice, yes.
There you go. Let's do it then. Okay, so Casey, do you have a library card?
I do not.
Okay, well, then I'll... If you were going to have a library card, what do you think you'd be utilizing it for in the library?
That's a good question. One of the things I saw when I was in the library last was the the book bags for the book clubs. I think that would probably be something that I would utilize with some of my friend groups. That seems interesting. When I saw that, I was like, oh, that's a pretty interesting concept I didn't think of.
And then why don't you just give me a little bit of the why, library trustee?
Why, library trustee? Well, I would like to do some service for the community, but I also work at the college, and I used to work for the city and now working at the college, which is more the state side, I've kind of noticed that with the city, we have a lot of resources, but we don't necessarily, we don't necessarily share the burden on some of those resources. So one of the big reasons I wanted to join was, one, to help try and find a way to increase participation, but also to maybe bridge some gaps between the college at the library, the college at the city, and maybe even the college at the state. Currently, the college is kind of trying to work with something at the state to do something like that, but I feel like there's that burden that we kind of all do something a little bit different, but they could all work together in a better way, and that's really what I would like to bring.
Thank you. Supervisor Shutey.
Thank you for applying, and I have a two-part question. One is, please share an example of where you feel the programming at the library excels, and what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
I think there's a few things. One of the things is the maker space that kind of is a buzz, even at the at the college with some of the, like, the K-12, the early education, things like that. I do know they do a lot with children. So both of those things, they kind of go hand in hand, and I think that kind of programming is really one of the better things that the library does, and one of the better groups that they focus on. So, yeah.
And the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library management, and I know you spoke to that a minute ago?
The only
Or programming, and what idea do you have to address it?
Yes, the only gap that I see, I see the focus on the younger crowd is amazing, but I believe I was reading the the library strategic plan, and it was interesting, the demographics, because most of the demographics in this community are above that age group. So, you know, it's good to focus on that, and I think that's a great spot, but I also think focus on some of the other age groups, the older age groups, the middle-of-the-road age groups, finding a way to bring them in, because at the end of the day, participation is what really drives whether or not we think something is successful. So.
Thank you. Supervisor White.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, you've answered one of my questions about being familiar with the strategic plan. Recently expired, by the way. In that strategic plan, it points out that 90% of the constituents have said that they wanted more STEM training, 91% said they wanted more vocational training, and 92% said that they were interested in more certification programs. Do you see that we have enough room in that facility to accomplish these kind of programs, and if we don't, how do we get more room?
That's a good question. Honestly, no, I don't think there's enough room to get all of that done. I think, once again, that partnership with the college that does a lot of the vocational training and a lot of those things, and maybe even a funnel to bring them to the other library or to funnel them away. As for space, that's a premium, as you all know. You just did that new fire station. We don't know how much that costs. So large amounts of space are, let's just say, expensive. So I feel like working within the boundaries that we have, I've said something many times before, and it's, there's never enough time and never enough money and never enough people in the government. So unfortunately, I don't think, I think working around the space is the option, not replacing or adding to. I just, I just don't see that financially.
Okay.
Supervisor Giomi.
Thank you. Casey, can you name what you think the three most important functions of the library performs are, and your assessment of how well those functions are being carried out?
So I barely heard that. The three functions of, what was it? I'm sorry.
Sorry, the three functions that the library performs and how well they're performing them.
Community involvement, I think they do very well with that. They have the reading, the groups, things of that nature. They serve the community as a whole with, for knowledge and curiosity, and I think they do that with the maker space, and I think things like that. And then, one of the biggies I see they do is they help maybe those that are not the most financially stable, where they offer them a place to be and a place to read, maybe somewhere to apply for a job. So to Supervisor White's point, that same idea of trying to bring vocation, maybe trying to bring, I know Nevada Works is in there, so it's kind of, I guess that's the same answer twice as the community, but it's different in different ways, at least I feel like, but in a sense, that's, it's a community library, so. But yes, I think they all do those things very well, but like I said, I think they could excel at some of the other ones, so, for sure.
And then if you'd like to make a closing statement, or just, why should we pick you? You're welcome to do so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I would love to be a part of the library board. I would love to be a service to the community, and I would love to do my best to help grow in any way, shape, or form. I feel like the management there is very strong, and as a board member, it's not necessarily to move in and do day-to-day operations, but more to help move the general ideas forward and to help promote the library in general. So that's really all I have.
Okay, well, Casey, again, you're welcome to stay. We'll make a, or you don't have to, because we have quite a few interviews to do, but, and we'll make our decision at the end of the process.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, Rena?
That's me, hello.
Hello. Rena Spanseal?
That is also me. Thank you.
You've not been through this process before.
I have not. This is my first time.
Okay, so what's going to happen to you? I promise not to scare you too bad.
Okay.
So we'll ask you a series of questions.
Okay.
And then when we're completed with our questions, you can have like a closing statement, or let us know anything that maybe one of our questions didn't cover that you would like us to know about you, or or why we should pick you, and then you're welcome to stay and listen to the remaining interviews to be done, and then we'll make our decision when we're completed with them.
Okay, thanks for that.
Well, welcome, and thank you so much for applying.
Yeah.
So my question is, do you have a library card?
I do have a library card, yes.
And can you tell me the last thing you checked out with your library card?
Yes, the last thing that I checked out with my library card was a book about water. I think it was called All About Water, and it was a nonfiction book that kind of looked at the story of how water infrastructure has been built around the world, and how the access to clean drinking water has been built over time. And so I like to nerd out on some nonfiction books sometimes, but it was really lyrically written and beautiful. I think I checked it out for a little bit longer than I should have, but I do know that I gave it back.
But it was hard, right?
It was a bigger book than I initially thought, but I enjoyed reading it, yes.
Okay, and why don't you tell us a little bit about why you want to be a library board trustee?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to be a library board trustee because I really care about literacy in my community. I am a licensed English teacher, although I currently teach art up in Reno, and a lot of my training as a public educator has been about literacy, and I define literacy as the ability to connect with information and use it to improve your own life. And so there's literacy of all kinds. Often, we're talking about, you know, can you read? Can you read the things that you want to read? And so I want to be a part of this board of trustees for the library, because I really believe that everybody needs access to the kinds of literacy that our libraries already provide, and I would love to be in the process of making that important work happen. So I don't want to revolutionize the whole board or, you know, shake things up too much, but I want to continue the really good work that's been done, and I feel that I have the skill set necessary to be able to read through the important documents, make important decisions about finances, and about different constituents coming together and what they need. I think I have the ability to really listen and to take in information and then synthesize that information with the help of, of course, everyone else who would be on the board. So I want to be there because I want to be part of the process, because I really care about literacy at all ages.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Shutey.
Thank you so much for applying.
Thank you.
So I have a two-part question.
Okay.
The first is, please share an example of where you feel the programming excels, our library programming, and what it is that you believe makes it so successful.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you for that question. I have had the most direct experience with the youth programming that the library puts on. I've been there with my younger sibling, and I have been there for some larger sort of community events that they've run. And so the particular programming that I went to last summer actually was their summer reading series, where they brought lots of different groups in at various times. I was there as part of sort of a general, like, teen reading night. I think it was called like a read-in, and we got together, and one of my students told me about this, so that's how I showed up to that. And I thought that that programming worked really well. I might have the name incorrect, because it let the youth lead, and so there was space for them, there was snacks, I think, some, you know, non-book damaging snacks, nothing like Hot Cheetos or something, right? And there was sort of this guidance from the librarians and support staff saying, okay, here's your options, here's what we are inviting you into, and then, hey, kids, how do you want to do this? And there was some library, I think they were volunteers, like youth volunteers, that were helping coordinate, and they were kind of talking to the adults, but then going back and talking to the youth, and I was mostly sitting on the side, kind of observing this, you know, there to support my student. And I thought that that was really effective, because there's the structure of the, you know, librarians who know how these things go and who are there day in, day out, but it wasn't all about them. It was about the young readers who were in front of them, and inviting those young readers to put forth their ideas, to share their enthusiasm and their passion. And so I think that the library needs to be a place where people, especially young people, or people who maybe are more introverts, as readers can be, to connect with other people and to understand what is exciting them. And I thought that that programming was particularly, not just useful to the community, but like empowering of the youth and understanding their perspective on things. So it was, for me, a particularly good program, because it involved intergenerational thinking and intergenerational collaboration, and it centered the people who it was trying to serve. So I haven't been to some of the other programs that the library does, like, I know that they have a, one that's for the little littles, and I know that they have one that's for our senior citizens. I'd love to attend those as well to see if that focus on the constituents that they're trying to serve was as powerful as when I was there, but I really enjoyed that they were really clear on their focus of who the programming was for, for that particular day. I hope I answered your question.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library management or programming, and if so, what idea do you have to help address a gap?
Yeah, thank you. What a good question. I have lived here in Carson City for about five years now, so I don't have the longitudinal experience that perhaps some of my peers would have in terms of, well, we used to have this thing, but we don't anymore. But what I've been able to identify in the time that I've been here is that it seems that a more robust connection for funding specifically with, like, I know that they do that, the Corners Bookstore, and they bring some additional funds in through the books that they sell there. And I've frequented that place a couple of times, you know, browsing for books, and I've noticed that some of the signage and some of the, like, explanations of how they're using those funds from that bookstore and what they're putting into the library is a little unclear. Not that I think the funds are being misappropriated or anything like that, but it would be really neat if you just walked in off the street to be like, ah, I'm buying a book from Corners Bookstore, and this is exactly where my dollars are going. So I just think increased transparency on some of the additional funding sources that the library has already set up for itself would be helpful for people to pull them into the library loop, as it were, and to also, you know, to just be clear to our citizens how these things are arranged. I really value transparency, and I think that that could be improved a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor White.
Thank you. Good morning.
Supervisor, hello, thank you.
Are you familiar with the recently expired strategic plan for the library?
I'm familiar that it recently expired. I'm familiar that there's a new one, I think, in the drafting process, but I'm not familiar with all of what is contained within that expired and newly being built plan.
In that strategic plan, as constituents have told us, that 90% of them want more STEM programming, 91% want more vocational programming, and 92% want more certification programming.
Okay.
Do you see that there's room in this facility to grow these programs, and if there isn't, how do we grow the facility?
What a great question, supervisor. Thank you so much. You're specifically speaking about the facility that is the main library building there.
Yes.
Yeah. Perhaps if there was some really creative planning that went into how different rooms could be used for different purposes, but I think some of those constituent desires would require some better or perhaps more robust equipment than currently can be wheeled into various facilities that I'm aware of in the central library. Like, for example, if there wanted to be a small engine repair for, like, perhaps there was like a workshop for some of those vocational skills, maybe bringing a whole bunch of small engines into the library would not be the most practical thing, as just an example. However, I know that the city in general has many facilities at its disposal. I'm not familiar with how different departments talk to one another about using facilities that aren't marked for them, but it seems to me that if there is such a strong percentage, over 90%, for a lot of those, like, desire for constituents to see these types of programming, perhaps a stopgap that isn't build a whole new facility, because obviously that would be a huge undertaking with lots of dollar signs in front of it, perhaps there could be some creative use of community space. Like, perhaps the library could take the charge in terms of organizing, but they could work with another department to ask to use the space through whatever, I'm sure existing channels exist for that kind of sharing of resources. So I would love to see more of that kind of programming. That sounds like what the community wants, and that's what all of us are here to do, right, is to help facilitate what the community wants to happen in our elected or appointed positions. But I think that perhaps there can be some creative use of space in the stopgap between deciding, okay, this is what they want, this is what we have, this is what we can pay for, but with what we have and what we can do already, these are our options. I'm interested if there could be collaboration between departments about getting some of that programming off the ground before brand-new facilities were appropriated for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giomi.
Oh, there he is. Okay, thanks.
Uh-oh.
Oh, no, supervisor, I can't hear you.
You have to be more intelligent than the computer, and I'm clearly not.
It's tough.
You've kind of touched on some of these things, but just briefly, what do you think the three most important things that the library does, and how they're doing those things?
What are the three most important things that I think the library does, and how do I feel they're currently doing those things?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. I think one of the most important things the library does is keep an archive of our community. If you're, if you go into the library, there's, you know, the popular fiction, the new releases, but then there's also a little section in the back that is an archive of us, of our community. And so I think one of the most important things that it does is maintain that archive, keep that archive available for people who want to access it, and kind of keep the boring paperwork, as it were, of the city in a safe and well-maintained place. So, now, that's one of the less glamorous things that our community library does, but I think that's one that they do well, is maintain that community archive. Another thing is that they do is provide options for people to build their literacy. Like I mentioned earlier, literacy is the main reason why I decided to apply for this position, and literacy to me means the ability to access texts from a variety of sources that can help you form your own, you know, informed opinions about important things. And when I have been in the library and when I've been perusing the stacks, I think there's a really good selection for different ages, different people, different walks different people, different walks of life, different reading levels, especially thinking about like the kids' books that they have access to. There's even some books in other languages. So I think that the library has been developing its, you know, library of documents over time to really fit the changing landscape of our community, as I understood it has changed over the last five years, the last 10 years, the last 20. So I think they do a really good job of keeping their stocks stocked for the new waves of people that come through our community and might want to build their literacy. And finally, the third thing that I think our library does really well is provide a space for people to get together and discuss, or read about, or make things happen for their community. There's not a lot of third spaces anymore. There's wonderful third spaces in the form of, you know, our local restaurants, our local cafes. And by third space, I mean a place where people can get together and talk that isn't their home, right? And the wonderful thing about the library is, you know, it's free to walk through the doors. It's free to sit down at a table. It's free to start up a conversation with somebody about what they're reading. And every single time I've been in the library, those things have happened in front of my eyes multiple times. So I think providing a space that is welcoming, but not so welcoming that, you know, you want to take a whole nap there perhaps every day, is something that our library does really well. It is, I think it has a nice balance of like, this is a place for learning and knowledge and conversation and community development, and also it's a place where we respect our materials and we don't just lounge about as a high school teacher. Loyering is something that I'm acutely aware of in terms of third spaces. So I think that our library does a really great job of being simultaneously welcoming and like, hey, what do you want to do here? How can we improve your literacy or improve your community engagement here? I hope I answered your question there, Supervisor. Thank you.
Okay. Now you can make any closing comments or thoughts that if you don't think it was already covered, that you'd like us to know.
Yeah. Yeah. I think I'd just like you all to know that I have a background in design and visual arts as well as literacy. And I think one of the important things that we need to keep in mind as we're, you know, building these institutions for our community into the future is the optics of things. And what I mean by that is like, how do you reel people in? Some just good old-fashioned marketing, right? And I think that I could lend my design sense and experience and marketing awareness to bring people into the types of programming that you mentioned, Supervisor White, our constituents want. So I wanted to leave you all with that additional skill set that I have, that I believe is helpful to this. I also just wanted to say thank you so much for your time and for this opportunity to be here and to be a little bit more involved in my community that I have joined a little bit more recently. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much again for applying, and you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Edward? Yes, I thought so. Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Thank you so much for applying for this position. We're really happy to have choices and that people are interested in serving. This is wonderful. So have you been through this process before?
I have not.
You have not. Okay, so what's going to happen is, we're going to ask you a series of questions. When we're done asking our questions, you can make any closing statement if you'd like to cover anything we might not have already gotten out of you. And then you're welcome to stay and listen to the other remaining interviews, and then the board will make the decision on who they're going to appoint.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So first off, do you have a library card?
I do, and it's current.
You do, and it's current. Well, why don't you tell me what the last thing is that you checked out?
Oh, boy, the last thing.
Got you now.
Yeah. You know, if I, if I read a book from the library, it's usually something that my wife checked out. And so the last thing I read that came from the library was, they have the program Carson City Reads, I think it's called. And so the title of this book was Solito. And I just finished reading that. It seems to be popular still among some of the people I know. And so that's as close as I come to checking out a book recently.
Okay. So then why don't you give me your, why, why do you want to be a library board trustee?
Well, you know, it could be a long story, but I think it basically boils down to, it's, the library's been a part of my life, most of my life, not all of my life. And growing up, it was important to, to me, because we just, it wasn't a household where we had a lot of books, encyclopedias, that kind of thing. And so the library was a place that I used to go to as part of my education, you know, to get schoolwork done, also to horse around. It was a social place for us to go and talk and chat. And, you know, sometimes I would tell my folks I was going to the library, but I didn't, you know. But, you know, it just, my kids relied on the library to some extent early on in their education. And, you know, I was reflecting on why I felt I had spent so much time in libraries over the years, but not checking out books. And what I recalled was, for instance, science fairs that the elementary schools would have, and we lived close to Seliger. And so the library would be where they would set up some of the science projects sometimes. And so I would be there. And then for the senior project at the high school, they would have the materials available to review the senior projects in the library there. So I was just having this sense of, you know, why do I feel like I've been in the library so much but not, you know, sitting there reading books? But, you know, over the years, we've gone there to check out DVDs and VHSs before that, you know, as a family, you know, as a way to save a little bit of money instead of getting it from the rental place. So more recently, I've been interested in needing a meeting space for a group of friends. And so I've checked into the availability of the different meeting rooms that they have there. And they even showed me the digitorium because there was a good chance we would need space for about 25 people. And so I've checked in with them a few times, and I don't know, you know, it's, the people who work in the library, they're so helpful. They're so sweet. I've gotten to hear the director of the library talk a few times in other public meetings that I've been at, and I've just been so impressed. So, you know, recently I've attended a few of the board meetings, and I've even engaged with the Friends of Carson City Library recently. I have volunteered for Browsers, Corners, probably Corner for probably about a couple of years back during the pandemic. And so one of the best experiences about that, well, Melody and I, my wife and I, we both did that. And it was fun to do something together. We both retired at the time. And so it was kind of fun to be there. It was, actually, it was a lot of fun to be there. I really felt like I was where I belonged. We have shelves of books in the house, you know. And so, you know, I think online stuff, you know, it's so easy to find stuff online and read. And, you know, I see that that's an important resource part of the library, you know, that there's access there for people who might not have a laptop or a cellphone or that kind of thing. I've been in there, and I've seen that it gets used by a variety of people who might not otherwise be able to afford a lot of things, you know. So I think that's an important part, important feature of the library. I'm aware of the virtual reality project that has to do with people finding opportunities to work. And Melody had attended that particular Board of Trustees meeting for the library, and she didn't get to put on one of the visual reality devices, but I think some of the board members might have been able to try them out. So anyways, I'm aware of a range of things that the library offers the community and how important it is. And so I just, I want to be a part of that. Well, I'm going on with just one question.
Okay. You're passionate.
Okay.
That's what matters, right? Okay. Supervisor Shute.
Thank you so much for applying. So I have a two-part question. The first is, please share an example of where you feel the library programming excels, and what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
Well, you know, I mentioned having been at a couple of public meetings where the library director spoke about the programs that are available. And, you know, I was, I was kind of blown away, to be honest. I had no idea how much the Carson City Library was doing. And so probably that first presentation that I heard would have been at least a few months ago, a number of months ago. And so that just kind of opened up my eyes. I got online to check things out and learn more about it. And it just struck me as a place that is there for a full range of members of our community, you know. And it's, you know, just the space of going in there, you know, I say it's, it's not like, I hardly ever go in there. Actually, I go in there more frequently than I realize. But, you know, it's just, you know, I hesitate to use the word sacred, but there's, I mean, it's a public resource. It's a place where people are quiet and respectful. They seem to honor what one another are there to do. When I have had to wait in line, you know, for, for some service while I was there, probably getting a book for my wife that was on hold, you know, it just, just the atmosphere. I've been there to meet with one of our senators' staff to have a chance to talk about things. So it's just, it's just is part of, part of Carson City that's vital to, to the community, you know, from all ages and all economic classes and so forth. So was that a two-part question?
Well, part two is, so thank you for part one. Do you see any gaps in our library management or programming? And if so, what idea might you have to address a gap?
Oh, boy, you know, people make their own decisions about what they spend their time doing, you know. But it kind of blows me away that so few people show up for the board meetings. And, and I have to admit, it's a recent interest of mine to be more cognizant of Carson City's boards, committees, and commissions. But that's just the way it is for me today. And, and so having been to a few of the board meetings and having been to a recent Friends of Carson City Library board meeting, I guess I'm, my eyes are open to the fact that there's this decision-making process that goes on in the community, this voting that goes on in the community. And I, and I, I guess I'm just kind of surprised. I mean, who am I to talk? I'm nobody to talk because I wasn't going, obviously, for years and years. But I guess to answer the question where I'm coming from is, I don't know, you know, it's not like advertising. It should be an attraction thing, not a promotion thing necessarily. So I don't, I don't know how to resolve something that appears to me to be a surprising amount of unawareness of an important resource in the city. Thanks.
Supervisor White.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to start with asking for a clarification in your application. In the section about briefly describe your qualifications, you remarked that you're retired and have time to invest. But then in your resume, where it talks about your work at the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, it states that you've worked there April 1998 to present. So are you retired or are you not retired?
I'm retired. That's an old resume. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Now to the question. Are you familiar with the recently expired strategic plan for the library?
Only passingly. I've opened it up, looked at it online, but not to retain much. I won't take a lot of your time trying to remember what it was that I had read while I was perusing it, but I'm aware of it, yeah.
Well, that strategic plan does state that the constituents have said 90% of the constituents want more STEM programming, 91% want more vocational programming, and 92% want more certification programming. Do you feel like there's enough room at the library and to expand these programs? And if there's not, how do we acquire the space to make that happen?
Well, big question. You know, I'm aware that people, you know, really don't, that taxation is an issue and it's a public resource. It seems like sometimes there's opportunities to move to a larger building for certain public functions. I think an expansion is in order. The city is growing. Population is growing. I would personally like to see the library, the space for the library to be increased, an addition or something like that. It's, it's in a pretty tight location, though, so I don't know. It bears, you know, some very careful additional research. But if I were asked, would I be willing to pay higher taxes, even though I'm retired? I definitely would be willing to pay higher taxes, even for the roads to get here or to the library.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giomi.
Thank you. My question, you've kind of covered this topic a little bit, but just in summary, can you tell me what you think the three most important functions that, what are the three most important functions the library performs, and your assessment of how well they perform those?
I would say number one for me is access to literature. And, you know, I think there's, I see the stacks, fiction, nonfiction. I see I see the contemporary books that are available as you walk in. And so I think, you know, as far as I'm familiar with the library materials, they're adequate. I know my, my wife is constantly checking out books, although there is competition with Browser's Corner. She's pretty founded, fond of Browser's Corner. I would say the, the second feature that's very important is just the nature of the space that people can go there at, at a wide range, relatively wide range of hours and be in a, a, a safe and secure spot. It's, it can be quiet. It is a chance for somebody to maybe meet up with someone. And it's just, it, it's a public space like no other in the community. And so just having, being able to enter into that space, the calm and the quiet is a blessing as far as I'm concerned. And I think it meets that purpose very well. The third thing is, is I think meeting the community's needs for, you know, current technology seems to be an important facet that I've heard discussed. And I'm, I'm not familiar with 3D printers, but I understand there's one that's available there. And I've heard people talk about having had an opportunity to use it, but being a little bit of a dinosaur, not that far into dinosaur hood, but, you know, getting close to the tar pit. You know, I would say that, and then knowing a little bit about this virtual reality opportunity in connection with state agencies, so that people, I've got a young friend, 30 years old, he's kind of, we get together and talk about how things are going periodically. And he would like to, you know, take advantage of other career opportunities. And so I, I mentioned this to him and sent him a link so he could read up on it. And it would be one of those things, a chance where he can expose himself to a new line of study and work, where he could improve his, his situation. So that's how I understand that, that particular project. And I've never had a virtual reality set of glasses on or anything like that, you know? But, you know, so I, I think our public library is, you know, seizing the new technology and making it available to the extent that their budget allows. So, yeah, what a challenge, what a challenge to this spectrum of people and their needs, you know, and to meet them. And I think that's probably one of the features of the library that is pretty impressive to me is, is that it just covers so many of the interests of our community with what I imagine compared to other communities is a, is a small budget. My mom passed away recently, and she was a big fan of the library in Batavia, Illinois. And so she volunteered and, and she and her husband made some pretty sizable donations to that library. And it's this huge cavernous library and a brick building. It's, it's lovely. And the reason I mention my mom passing was because somebody had, in sharing at her memorial service, they mentioned the fact that she and Joe had, had a plaque on the wall because they were contributors to the library. So I made a decision with family members to go over to the Batavia Library when we were back there for her memorial service. This is in Illinois. And so the first thing I did was, well, I've got a subject matter on my mind, and I went to the stacks to see if they had, had books on this. And it just happened to be Zen Buddhism, you know? That's what was on my mind at the moment. And so, so I went to the stacks and I found all these great books on Zen Buddhism. I don't know if I could do that here. I haven't looked for them here in the library yet, or have I? Huh. So anyways, yeah, I, I, I don't know, library just serves a very prominent purpose in a community. It's, it's definitely part of the heart and soul of Carson City as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Okay. Ed, do you have any other thoughts that you wanted to share with us that you might not have covered?
I can't imagine I could say more at this point in time. And I, I'm aware of, you know, you guys work so efficiently. I'm so impressed how prepared you show up and complex stuff. And I look at the agenda packet and I'm going, holy smokes, you know, every two weeks you guys are doing this. And you just have my respect and gratitude. I was on the planning commission back in the 90s for three years. I didn't finish out the four-year term. It just became too much for me. And so I have just a little bit of an understanding of what it is that you do, and I'm just in awe and grateful for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? Oh, thank you. Open right into the bitter end. John?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is John Talkington.
Correct.
Okay. Well, welcome and thank you for applying. We're very appreciative that you've done so. Have you been through an interview process before?
Not here.
Not in Carson? Okay. So what we're going to do is each of us will take a turn and we'll ask you a series of questions. Then at the end of that, you're welcome to make any closing statement and fill in any gaps or things that you want to share with us. Then you're welcome to stay and listen to any further interviews. At the completion of the interviews, the board will make a decision for the appointments. So just want to, again, thank you so much for applying. So I'm going to start with, do you have a library card?
I do.
And tell me the last thing that you checked out with your card.
I haven't really checked anything out. I've had the card. I, I applied for the card about a year ago. And there's been some issue with it lately, so I had to reapply. So I'm going through that process now.
Okay. Why don't you tell me why you'd like to be a member of the library board?
I've lived in Carson City for 24 years now and have been busy traveling with work. And now I'm retired and I have some time on my hands. And I've interacted with city governments from time to time over the years, but from the outside, never on the inside. So I thought it would be an interesting experience to be able to make a contribution to the city that I live in, in some way.
Supervisor Shutey.
Hello, and thanks for applying. I have a two-part question. The first is, please share an example of where you feel the library programming excels, and what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the first question.
So share an example of where you feel the library programming excels, and what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
Well, I think it's a, a good central location for a knowledge base within any city. I don't know if you're referring to Carson Library in particular or libraries in general, but I'm not that familiar with the workings of the Carson Library. But I think the library is a, is an invaluable resource for any city. And with technology changing as fast as it does, I believe, I believe the Carson Library does keep up with current technologies and offers more in the way of virtual reality and all types of different media for that knowledge base.
Great, thank you. And the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library, the management or programming? And if so, what could be an example or an idea to address a gap?
I don't see any gaps currently. I'm not that close to the operations of the library, but I would be interesting in, interested in becoming more involved and applying what I have to offer.
Thank you.
Supervisor White.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Are you familiar with the recently expired strategic plan?
I am not.
In that plan, the constituents have told us 90% of them are interested in more STEM program, 91% are interested in more vocational programming, and 92% are interested in more certification programming. So I'm just wondering, do you think there's adequate room in the library? And if you don't think there is, how do we acquire more space?
You're referring to physical space?
Yes.
Well, there's a, I think there's a limit in the size of the current library, but there are multiple options to access additional space. Throughout the city, there are vacant structures that are for lease. I don't know if there's anything within walking distance of the current library that's available, but leasing is an option, building an additional structure for the library, an annex or whatever, or maybe even building a new library, which would probably be the most expensive of those options. I don't know how cost-effective a solution you're looking for, but based on what you have to work with financially, I think an assessment could be made and a recommendation as to which one of those options would be the most workable.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giomi, he's on the screen.
Ed, or can you tell me what you think the three most important functions that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah. Can you please tell me what the three most important functions that the library performs is and your assessment of how well they're being carried out?
I'm not, I didn't hear the, the key word in that phrase, the three most important what?
Functions.
Okay. I don't know what the library's charter or functions are currently.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any final comments or anything you'd like to share with us?
No, I think not.
You've, you've got it done.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ann. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Great. Thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate this.
Well, thank you.
Have you been through an interview process for one of our boards and commissioners?
I have not. This is a new territory.
This is new. Okay, so what we're going to do is ask you a series of questions. Then at the completion of our questioning, you can add any final comments that you think are necessary for us to learn about you or, or your whys or whatever, that to help us make our final decision.
All right.
Then you're welcome to stay and listen to the remainder of the interviews that we have today. At the end of the final interview, we'll be making our decision.
All right.
So again, thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate it. So my question is, do you have a library card?
I do have a library. I even have a library license plate, yes.
Oh, and a license plate. Maybe that's a little extra point for the license plate. Can you tell me what the last thing is you used it to check out?
It is a book that I finished. You actually want the name of the book? Oh, that would be a little strange. It's, it's called Never Leave Me. It's a fiction book that won the Nobel Prize. It was a fabulous book. So I, I'm a regular library patron and I bring my granddaughter and my husband, just goes and whole family thing, yeah.
Okay, so tell me the, why do you want to be on the library board?
Great question. I saw that there were all the openings, and I said to myself, well, why not? Give it a go if it's something that I can bring to the board that it needs. And I don't know that I, whether I, what I bring or what I don't bring, because I'm not sure exactly what you want. But I watched some of the library board meetings, and I thought to myself, you know, they have a big impact, although a lot of it seems to fall to the library director, wonderful person. It's just, it's it because that person has, carries a lot of weight. But the library board is an important role in the community. I want to be involved more in the community now that I have a little more time. And so I just thought that I would do the proverbial throw my hat into the ring, that kind of thing.
Great, thank you so much. Supervisor Shutey.
Hi, Ann, and thank you so much for applying.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. I have a two-part question. The first is, please share an example of where you feel the library programming excels, and what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
I think the programming is exceptional with especially young children, you know? And I, and I'm pleased to be able to say that because when you bring in young people, little kids, their parents, their families, then those, they become library users for life. If not as a steady pace, they're aware of it. I think that the impact on young readers, on the idea of having access to things outside ourselves, it's free, we can go, there's programs, they make it entertaining. And I, one thing that I heard at one of the board meetings was their growth in the teenage level. And I think that's wonderful because it's such a difficult time just to be a person. And to think that this is a nice, safe place for them to come, you know, maybe they didn't come a lot when they were little or they thought they outgrew it. So the impact on youth, I think, is exceptional. I think they do a great job, you know, with the summer reading programs, all of those kind of things to foster enthusiasm for literacy. So that, I think, would be the answer to that question. Did I give you what you?
Absolutely. Wonderful. And the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library management or programming? And if so, what might be an idea to, to fill a gap?
Interesting. I would say that, like, I presume, I think I'm, I'm not exceptional. I come, I get what I need, I do my thing, I'm fine, right? Because I have my niche. When I look at the bigger picture, though, I know that there are people who are unaware of what the library has to offer. I know that there are people who don't see the library as a relevant force in their life. And that is a concern to me, that it is not noted as, as being vital in ways beyond, you go for the kids' show, you know, the kids' program. But I say that with a big caveat in that I don't think that's a universal truth. I think that's a little, I'm just making the observation that this is something I'm seeing. This isn't based, this is an opinion that is not based on research. I have not researched the type of people that come to the library. I don't have access to that, or if I do, I don't know where that information is. In order to give you a really good answer to that, I would need more information. I would want to know who is served in the library, what aspects of the programming are on the, on the rise, which ones are like a nice idea, we really thought this would work, but it doesn't. So I would want to have more information before I could really say this is a big gap from a, an adult user who's a library kind of person. of person, I go, I find what I need, and if I don't, the very nice staff will help me find what I want, or get it from another library. I know that there are offerings, you know, upstairs, you can do the magazines, you can use the computers, and all sorts of aspects. And so part of being on the board would enable me to understand more, what does the library need, and how could I bring ideas to support that? I would, as a member of the board, I think that one is part of the puzzle pieces, right? It's not the board is going to come and fix everything, it's a unifying thing. But once again, the people on the front line, the people who are running the library are the ones who really know a great deal. But as a board member, I would commit to understand more, so that if you were to ask me that question after I had been on the board, or after I knew, I think I could give you a better answer. Because right now, I have a very limited, narrow view, right? I'm on the outside, this looks nice over here. I don't know what I don't know. Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you familiar with the recently expired strategic plan for the library?
I am familiar with it. That's all I can say.
In that plan, in that plan, our constituents have told us that 90% of them want more STEM programming, 91% want more vocational programming, and 92% want more certification programming.
Okay.
Is there enough room in our library to expand these programs? And if you think there isn't, how do we acquire more space?
Interesting. I don't know that I would equate physical space with some of that programming. Some of the programming, certainly if you're going to do STEM activities where the kids are building something, doing something, or even adults would be, then physical space is going to be the thing. But one of the things that I know that the library has done is partnered with, I'm not even going to guess, because then I will guess incorrectly, and I won't know the answer, the visual, you know, the VR training kind of thing. And so some of the programming could be in a non-physical space. If you're asking me, where could we find physical space? Once again, I would need to know more information. It's my understanding that the building has been constructed in a way that you can't go up. I think that I've read that or heard that. I would need more information. And so I'm not sure what land is available, but at the money to do it, I think that would be a challenge. If you needed more physical space, the cost would have to be, would be quite a lot, I'm sure, to do any kind of construction. Would one trade out something that is already in the library that doesn't get used? It's something one would have to evaluate as far as space, like, because I believe your question was, where would we get the space? And so those are the things that I would want to be getting more information of, do we actually need physical space? If so, how can we repurpose something we have, or make it have double duty? Maybe not get rid of it, but on this time it works here, we move everything to the left, and now we're something different, you know, that type of thing, a make-do's type of situation. I don't know that construction is even a viable option in a difficult financial time. I just don't know the answer to that. That would require more information.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Supervisor Giomi?
Hello. I think I'm looking at you. I hope I make an eye contact with you. Okay.
Yeah, it's a little hard. I'm a little farther away.
Okay.
What are the three most important functions that the library performs, and what is your assessment of how those functions are currently being carried out?
Great. I have not thought about it in terms of A, B, and C, right? But a library provides access to information, whether it be information found in the pleasure of reading a fiction book, the research of looking up nonfiction current events-type information. The library is a place to access knowledge. So I think that would be one of the main things. It is a community-centered, it's a community-based centered organism that people need to feel welcome in and have access to. I think that's a main function of it. We see that in our library, where people have various meetings, where, you know, on the weekends, I know that they have lots of, you know, game things, and there are places to do quiet studies. So community-based, information-based. And as far as a third one, it all kind of blurs in. So now I have to think to myself, hmm, he asked for three. I think I've covered it in two. But I think it would be not a physical, not just a physical sense, but the emotional, you know, the sense of welcome, the sense of environment, the sense of environment with accessibility. I can go to the desk, I'm not going to feel like they're going to have any negative connotation. They're going to be helpful, they're going to be accessible. And in my time in the library, to take a look now at your second part, how are we doing? I'll start with the last one first. You know, I linger in the library on occasion, and I see very many different types of people, many different types of people. And they are all treated respectfully, and they are all given what appears to me, what they need. As in, if they need space, if they need an answer to a question, if they need a little proverbial hand-holding because they feel intimidated by a system, or don't understand how to access something, they're given that. And so in that sense, I think that that is, you know, a wonderful thing. As far as having appropriate materials for the knowledge base, they're part of a larger network, and so therefore you can ask for information, and they send it to you in the sense of books. They do a good job leaking, like I can use my Kindle, and I could read something. So they have access to that kind of information sharing that covers a large gamut, right? The physical space, we talked about that before with Mr. White. The physical space, they've moved things around frequently, and I have a sense that they are looking to find the perfect balance of getting what they need for what they understand the public wants. I don't think they've quite landed where they want to be, and I don't think they ever will be, because it's always going to evolve. There's going to be someone with a new program, someone with a new vision, and we can put this here, and we can put that there. I know that they've discussed upgrading the restrooms. I think that is a good thing. And I'm glad that that's going to happen. I believe that's going to happen. I think I heard that. So I would say it is a, it's a community hub, it's a community center. It must be seen as relevant, it must be seen as vital. It is a concern to me that the county to the north did not vote money to give to their library that wouldn't have cost them anything. And it indicates to me that people, maybe not in Carson City, but people in just the general area, had some vision that a library was not as, in such an integral part to society, that it must be there like a road, like a stoplight, like all those things that we know are part of our society. And I would not want that to become the mindset that we see in Carson City. Thinking of the strategic plan, as I recall looking at it, it made me wonder, who responded to the surveys they did? Because was it a broad group of people who maybe don't use the library? How did they find their audience? Do people see the library as a place that needs to be not just supported as in an out-there thing, but as part of daily, if not daily, I don't expect people to go there every day, but as part of the fabric of Carson City life? And I think that that is what the board needs to support, the library and the library to do, to become, that as a community, we need to see the library as an instrumental part for job training, for STEM activities, for information, for community. So I think that would be my take on that. Thank you.
So now you can have any closing remark, if there's something you haven't covered or done that you think we should know about before we make our final decision.
I was heartened by my time waiting for this interview, talking with people out there. I bring who I am. I have no, you know, I worked at the library, I have a passion for literacy, I have a passion for learning. And if I'm on the board, I will do my best to educate myself, to address the needs as I see them. However, I talk to some wonderful people, and I think you have great choices. And so if I fit the bill for what you want, I'm very honored and happy to do it. And if I don't, I feel very comfortable that you will pick the people that you need to do this. And so unless you have something else, I think that's all I have.
Well, thank you again so much for applying. It is very appreciated.
And thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the time that all of you are taking with this. This is a large investment of time and energy on your part to listen to us and to evaluate our answers, and I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Well, thank you again so much. And again, you're welcome to stay and
I think I will.
See where, see where we're going.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lisa? We have Lisa Jones?
Yeah.
Hi, Lisa. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. So have you been through the process before?
No.
Okay, so what we're going to do is ask you a series of questions. At the completion of that, you can make any closing statement that you would like to, on anything we didn't cover. And then you're welcome to stay in the audience and listen to any remaining interviews. And then I'll bring it back to this board, and we'll make our decision on who we're going to select. So
Okay, thank you.
I want to start off again with a thank you for applying. I know it takes a lot of energy and time and nerves for many, but we just really want to thank you for being willing to serve. So I'm going to start off with the easy question, is, do you have a library card?
I do.
And tell me the last thing you used your card for.
I checked out James by Percival Everett on Libby, and I checked out a couple of books at the library a few weeks ago, the Anne Lamott book, and Criticism of Mark Twain, because I reread Huck Finn recently on Libby to prepare myself for James.
There you go. Okay, and then why don't you talk to us about why you think you want to be on the library board?
Well, I've been a book lover all my life. I was one of those kids who struggled to learn to read in first grade, but when I got it, you just couldn't pry the books out of my hands. I used to get in trouble for reading. My mother would say, I told you, stop reading, it's at the table. I'd say, one more chapter, one more chapter. And I said, I'll never, I'll never do that to my children. But of course I did, because they were book people too, and still are. But I, I believe that reading is such an important thing, and as our society changes and the world changes, I don't think there's enough of it anymore. I also feel that the library is not just a place for books and readers, but it's a social place, it's a hub of information and communication and community. And that's very important to me. I've been involved in a lot of different nonprofit volunteer organizations over time. When my kids were younger, that was all centered around them, PTA, scouts, their lessons and teams and so forth. But as they've gotten older, I've found I have time to be more involved in other things, and this is something I'd like to be involved in and give back to if, if I'm selected. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Shudee?
Hello, and welcome, and thank you for applying. I have two parts to a question. So the first is, please share an example of where you feel the library, library programming excels, and what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
Well, I do believe that the library has continued to evolve, you know, with things like the Makerspace and the, the online things like Libby that are so accessible. When I see the chess club there, and the other clubs meeting, whenever I come to the library, I am sometimes surprised, but always pleased to see how many people are there using it. It's stayed relevant, it's continued to evolve, and that makes me very happy.
Excellent. And then the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library management or programming? And if so, what ideas might you have to help address the gaps?
You know, I really don't from my perspective, but I plan to become more intimately involved in what is going on, and I'm happy to, to work together with others and address any gaps that may exist.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you familiar with our, with the library's recently expired strategic plan?
I am not.
In that plan, our constituents, 90% of our constituents have told us that they want more STEM program, 91% said they wanted more vocational programming, and 92% said they wanted more certification programming. Do you feel like the library currently has enough space to grow those programs? And if it doesn't, where do we get more space?
That's a good question. I don't know that it does, but I'm happy to be part of exploring those options and possibilities.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giomi?
Hello, I'd like to know if you can tell me what are the three most important functions that the library performs, and what is your assessment of how those functions are being carried out?
Well, I think one of the most important functions of the library is to provide a inviting, safe, social space for everyone in the community. And I think the, the library does that well. Another is to expand horizons, and I think the library does that well also. And I believe as, as we move forward into the future, thinking outside the box. And I think the library does that well also.
Okay. So then Lisa, do you have any final comments or things you'd like to share with us?
I, I will comment that my current job is a budget analyst, more or less, for the state of Nevada. And I work with budgets and grants and so forth for the various divisions of the Department of Business and Industry. I've been with them almost nine years now. So I'm very familiar with budgeting and budget management. I know that that's a skill that's needed. But I've also been involved with a lot of program-type work, both in my nonprofit and volunteer status and, and the jobs that I've held. And should I be selected, I look forward to learning more about what I can do.
Thank you again so much for applying. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you're welcome to stay in the audience if you'd like.
Thank you.
Can we take like one and a half, two or three friends?
We can, if needed. We have one more candidate.
Oh, just one more?
Yep, just one more. If there's been two, I'm gonna do it with you. Hi there. So I'm gonna guess, Griffin Peralta?
Yes, I am Griffin Peralta.
Okay. Hello, and thank you so much for applying. We really appreciate that. We're going to ask you a series of questions, and then you can make any and then you can make any closing statement if you'd like. And then as you're the last candidate, then we'll make a decision on who we're gonna select right after you are interviewed.
Oh wow.
Okay. So my questions, do you have a library card?
Oh yes, absolutely. In two counties at least.
Oh, in two counties? Great. And can you tell me the last item you checked out?
Yeah, absolutely. Here from the Carson City Public Library, the most recent things that I checked out were bilingual materials for my curriculum as an English educator. At the Washoe County Library System, my most recent checkouts were for my specialty class on mythology. I teach an advanced course which is on world mythology. And so I'm constantly seeking out original texts for that. And I pulled some from the downtown Reno library fairly recently too.
Oh great. Okay. Then why don't you tell us why you'd like to be on the library board?
Well, more than anything, I think of myself as a community servant. I am a teacher primarily for this purpose and I'm always looking for more ways to be involved in my community and to volunteer and to give the energy and expertise I have to the people around me. I've been living here in Carson for about five years and I'd like to get a little more involved. Here I am.
Oh, thank you. Supervisor Shutey?
Hello and thanks so much for applying. My first part of the question is, please share an example of where you feel the programming at our library excels. And what is it that you believe makes it so successful?
So I'd like to draw a contrast compared to what the Carson City Library is doing to some other library systems that I'm aware of. I'm really impressed by kind of the innovation center that is currently running at our local library, where they have resources for people to learn kind of tech-based things. Their 3D printing initiatives, as well as their various like design programs that are available to people. I know they do classes and stuff. I think that's a really great engagement thing, especially as things shift more and more towards a digital era. I'm really impressed by that programming at our library specifically here.
Nice, thank you. Then the next part is, do you see any gaps in our library management or programming? And if so, what ideas might you have to address these gaps?
I wouldn't say necessarily that I identify specific gaps. There are things that I'm interested in bringing to our library that I'm currently doing in the Washoe County Library System, such as this. I volunteer a lot with the Washoe County Library System. I run a variety of educational programs around poetry and literary arts. And so that's the sort of thing, of course, as an English teacher, that I'd be really interested in bringing here. And I have a strong basis of understanding how it works because I've been running it at another library.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. Are you familiar with the recently expired library strategic plan?
I am familiar that it exists. I know that you're in the process of making another one. I know that the previous one came down a little bit to a consulting question, but I won't pretend like I read the whole thing and studied it for this interview.
That, that study tells us that our constituents, 90% want more STEM programming, 91% want more vocational programming, and 92% want more certification programming. Do you think there's room in the, in the library currently to grow these programs? And if you don't think there is, where do we find more room?
I absolutely do. This is great because I gave a shout out to those kind of tech centers that exist in our library here already. And oftentimes when I'm in that library looking at just like literary resources, I see that those centers are like dark and not in use. So I think that there's absolutely a space for it. I know that it's there and that we could create programming design specifically to invigorate those existing spaces. I think it's all just like right there. It's obvious that previous trustees have made an investment in that specific thing already.
Thank you.
Supervisor Giomi, he's on the video.
Yep, thank you. Can you tell me, Griffin, what are the three most important functions that you see that the library performs? And what's your assessment of how those functions are currently being carried out?
I think that the library has, okay, three primary functions is the question, part one. I would say the three primary functions of the library are, A, to provide literacy resources for the community. I would say, B, to provide job advocacy resources for the community. I know that a lot of people use public libraries to just handle the basic internet access they need to make job applications or seek that sort of thing here. So I think that sort of advocacy for the community is also really important. And I think third, the library's primary function is to take the community's interest in being literate or being tech savvy and accommodate that primarily, right? So I would say those are the three primary functions of the library. To increase literacy, to involve the community, and specifically to help people close those employment and labor gaps. What was the second part of the question?
And secondly, it's your assessment of how those functions are being carried out.
And as far as our Carson City Library is going, I would say pretty well. When I first started using the library here, I spent a lot of time in a lot of the different sections to just kind of see how much of those things I just mentioned were actually available. I find that there's a good computer lab upstairs there where lots of people seem to be using that sort of kind of like labor equity. I know because I received a newsletter that we're running some pretty cool educational programming that obviously I'm not involved in because I'm a grown person, but like seems interesting. So my general assessment would be that of those three things that I think are important for a library system, they seem present and I would love to just help them thrive.
Griffin, is there any additional information or that you'd like to share with us?
It's funny, I think that when you first said that I was gonna get to make a closing statement, I was going to talk about my general focus as a community servant. But somebody softball pitched me a question that let me talk about that already. So I guess generally, what I would like you to think is, if you choose me for this position, you know that you have someone who is dedicated to a life of community service. That's my primary thing as a volunteer and as an educator, who is deeply invested specifically in literacy. And also if you're seeing from where you're sitting that I have hand tattoos, but you can't read them, they do in fact say, "Read and more" here, right? So like if you're, if you're wondering about that later, you know, right? Yeah, see like as an English teacher, I use that mostly to shame my students into reading when they should be. But I do find when I'm in interview situations that people are sometimes kind of spooked like that. So if you can't make it out from across the room, that's, that's the shout. Cool, that'll be my closing statement. You know, I'm gonna decide right now who gets this job.
We are.
Oh cool, I guess I'll sit down and, and wait for that.
You finished us off, I think it isn't anymore, right? Okay, thank you again so much for applying. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, team. I'm so pleased to be here.
Okay, it is time. I'm gonna bring it back up to the board. We have two to fill, one for June 2026 and one for June 2027. Generally what we're, as we always do, we're, we'll go around and tell me your top two or whatever and we'll see where we have consistency across the board, if any. Sometimes we get lucky and we all just agree right off, sometimes not. Stacy, since you're on a screen, did you wanna, I'll go ahead and have you go first. Is there two or three that rose to the top for you?
Sure. Yeah, this, you know, I, I, first off, I'm, I'm elated that we had so many people interested in wanting to help us serve on the library board. I, you know, in my six years on the board, I, we'd never had this many applicants, to my knowledge, for any position. So that, that warms my heart, the fact that we, we have that many folks in our community who are interested in, in serving. And I, I really appreciate all of their time. This is really difficult because there, I, I think they all did very well. There were four that sort of rose to the top for me. And narrowing it down from those four to two, which I'll do, is difficult. And, but in the end, Rena and Anne for me rose to the top. Just, I, I both, I felt that their answers were thoughtful and practical and, and well thought out and realistic. So Rena Spanzal and Anne Lenhares are the, the two that I would rise to the top. There are others I could certainly support, but wanted to start there, see where we get.
Okay. Maurice?
I, I couldn't understand what Stacy was saying.
Said Rena and Anne.
I can go with that.
Okay.
They're on my list.
Lisa?
Rena and Anne are both on my list as well. And I have to also say, Griffin, I just so appreciate your positive energy, the idea of community service. Yeah, so those were my top three.
Well, and somehow we're all agreeing today because those are my top three also. And the, and the discussion for me or for us as a group, whether we think, let me see this right, Griffin's energy would do something for that board, right? Whether it would, well, whether it would just entice it to just think outside the box or to grow or to... So there was something there in Griffin's interview that really piqued my interest of would he bring something to the board that does not currently exist? Would he help grow the library services or... So I just throw that out and I'm also had, so those were my three, Griffin, Rena and Anne. And so I think that it's just a, a discussion when you look at a board and how will it work together? And how will it grow and how will it be good for the community? And what, what would that bring? So I just throw that out as a final thought.
I absolutely agree. Both Rena and Griffin, something that really stood out to me. Griffin, your "read more", that is amazing. And as a retired middle school teacher and to both of you, you know, it's just to, to reach out to kids and to get that hook is just fantastic. And so that kind of passion. Rena, when you said a student invited you to come and you did, again, thank you. So, so to both, I mean, really, this is tough. This is tough. But I also, that whole different idea and the energy. Griffin, not that Rena, you didn't have energy, so... But just that, that vibrancy, I really think really spoke to me. So, yeah.
Thoughts? Stacy, was Griffin in your top four too?
Yes, uh, yeah, yes. I mean, all the three we're talking about, I, I... You know, I, I, the, the person who rose to the top for me, obviously those, all three of those are right up there. But I, I really appreciated Anne's sort of practical and realistic approach to her answers. And I think it's the sort of steady calm that the board can use. So she actually was at the top of my list. I, I would be very comfortable with both Rena and Griffin. Different reasons, we could put them both on, or all three of them.
I'm sorry to back up. My actual number one choice was Anne. So my dilemma is between Rena and Griffin. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying because that's kind of where I am too.
Maurice? Does something pique you more than one or the other?
I, I will say that Rena and Anne really did populate the very top of what I was looking at. And I'm with you guys, I appreciate that energy and enthusiasm. But I, I didn't get Griffin in my top four.
You did not? Okay. Well, then I think we're ready for a motion in the decision if Anne was everyone's top. I think then I would love to entertain a motion for Anne for the 2027s and she was the top, we'd give her the two-year appointment. Is that okay? Everybody on that? No problems? I'll accept a motion then for the two positions and Supervisor Shutey?
All right. I move to appoint Anne Lenhares to the partial term that will expire in June of 2027. And I move to appoint Rena Spanzal. Is that how you pronounce your name? Spanzal, oh, I'm sorry. I, I, my notes covered up the spelling. Apologies for that. To the partial term that will expire in June of 2026. Second.
I will second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Shutey and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect that was four yeses, one absent. And again, thank every single one of you for applying. We could have had any one of you on this board. And that's not usual. I think like Supervisor Giomi said, it's so rare that we get so many in the community wanting to apply and that we could have picked any of you.
Well, right.
Any one of you could have done the job. So thank you.
What incredibly wonderful group of, of applicants and the different perspectives and ideas and passions.
We'll have more opportunities, I'm positive, for boards. So don't quit trying. Okay, we are gonna take just a quick recess and then we'll come back to Agenda Item 19A. So we're in recess. So we're in recess. The Board of Supervisors back to order. I'm actually going to take Agenda Item 20A next so that we can, um, be good to the members in the audience. This is discussion of possible action to adopt on second reading, Bill Number 103 on a Planned Unit Development. Ms. Warren, may I have the title, please?
Sure. Ordinance 2025 dash three, Bill 103. An ordinance relating to zoning, approving a planned unit development, amending the zoning map to change the use district from multifamily apartment and public regional to a multifamily apartment planned unit development and approving a tentative subdivision map for 240 single-family townhomes residences, townhome residences on property located approximately 615 feet to the east of Antler Drive and to the north and west of Morgan Mill Road. Assessors parcel numbers 008-522-36 and 008-522-38.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Sullivan, do we have any additional public comments, changes to this item?
No.
None?
No.
Do we have any public comment on this item? You sat through the library. You sure you don't have anything to say? We made a good decision. Okay. Does any member of the board have any questions or anything? No? No one? We're all good? No public comment? Okay. Supervisor Shutey, a motion, please.
I move to adopt on second reading, Bill Number 103, Ordinance Number 2025 dash three.
I have a second by Supervisor Giomi. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect it was three yeses, one no by Supervisor White and one absent Supervisor Horton. Thank you. Thank you and have a good day. Okay. We're now going to go to Agenda Item 19A. For the record, please be, uh, working from your late material. This is discussion of possible action regarding a letter of intent to lease from BOC LTD to Carson City on non-binding terms for Carson City to rent approximately 12,120 square feet of office space. Robert, would you like to take us through this item, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, for the record. Robert Nellis, City Asset Services Manager. The letter of intent, uh, provides the city with two options for the board's consideration. One is a 63-month term lease, the other is a 120-month term lease. Both, uh, initially have three months at no charge to the city and then 3% annual increases thereafter. Under both scenarios, the city would make no tenant improvements like we originally discussed at the, uh, board retreat. These improvements would actually be made by the owner and be amortized over the term, whether it be five years or 10 years. And then, uh, if the lease after this meeting, if we actually execute a lease, uh, at a future board meeting, no later than August 7th, they still anticipate the improvements would be completed by December of 2025, which would be in line with the clerk recorder's timetable to move in before the election year of 2026. There are early termination penalties, uh, whether the board elects to go with the five-year or the 10-year, uh, lease term. And however, the LOI is non-binding. So this simply enables staff to bring forward a lease in the future to the board that would actually have all the terms contained in it that we would execute at that time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
City member have a question. Supervisor White.
Thank you. What's the total cost on the 63-month, uh, term?
Supervisor White, uh, for 63 months, total cost would be about $2,133,000.
Okay. And what do we think the cost of the tenant improvements are?
Uh, we, we do have the owners representative here that could answer that, uh, more thoroughly. I estimate them being at $1 million.
Say again?
$1 million.
Okay. So we rent space at the Sheriff's Department to the Nevada Highway Patrol. A dollar and 37 cents a square foot. At this, we're looking at $2.90 a square foot. How do, how do we get from a dollar 37 for office space to 290 for office space?
Supervisor White, the, the difference would be, you know, a closer comparison might be if there was, uh, no investment made in tenant improvements by either the city or the owner. If that were the case, we would be closer to that number if, for an actual negotiated lease. If it was just simply moving into a space that's ready to go, no improvements whatsoever, we'd be closer to that number that we leased out space for.
This is probably a question for someone else. On page 526, there's a comment there that says this would be paid for out of the newly created building rent account. I don't remember that being in the redevelopment, um, revolving, uh, budget. So could somebody show me where that's at in the budget?
I'm sorry. I was reading emails. What was your question?
It mentions here that, uh, these costs will be paid for from the newly created building rent account. That's in the redevelopment authority revolving budget. I don't find that account number or that line item in the budget. Can somebody tell me where that's at?
Yeah, we would have to create a new account because we don't currently pay rent for that building. So it would be a newly created account. It would come from undesignated in the redevelopment fund.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got it under your questions?
It's all the questions I have.
Okay. Um, do you have questions?
Well, thank you for, uh, the conversations that we had and the questions and answering it. And, and, um, really what I had brought to, uh, when I was asking what were some of the pros and cons of a, a shorter or longer lease? And, and so if you could just speak to that a little bit, that would be wonderful. I then had, uh, talked about what, what really are the needs? And so really what is the genesis of, of all the changes that are, would be, uh, or the modifications to the building? So if you could speak to that, that'd be great.
Thank you Supervisor Shutey. For the record, Robert Nellis. Whether it's a, the 63-month term or the 10-year term, the improvements that need to be made would be basically compressed under a 63-month term instead of stretched out and advertised over a 10-year lease. So we, we end up paying the same amount, just in a shorter period of time. The clerk recorder's, uh, needs, we've discussed with the owner and those would are, at least in concept, have been approved by the ownership. So we need to still get with the architect and design everything and, you know, basically narrow down those needs. But, uh, everything is, uh, that, as far as the general scope of where the clerk recorder's office would be, and, and backing up a little bit. The first floor of this building at 600 East William is vacant. It's essentially a, uh, space that could be easily gutted and repurposed for the clerk recorder's needs. So it's, it's not as if we're going into a space where we're kind of shoehorning the clerk recorder into certain spots. There's plenty of room to design spots for the clerk recorder elections and, uh, the marriage functions of his office. So, uh, I don't know if that answered all your questions or, or if you had more.
Did, thank you.
Did you have questions Supervisor Giomi?
Yes. Um, can you hear me a little better? I kind of moved things around a little bit.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Robert, I, um, I guess I, I have a couple of things I want to ask. I, I suppose between you and the city manager and the clerk, do we feel like, do you, in your opinions, feel like this is the best option out there? In other words, obviously you've explored other things, um, you've looked at other, uh, potential sites. In totality, is this the best we can get for the price?
Supervisor Giomi, for the record, Robert Nellis. Yeah, it's a great question. In, in our market and, you know, smaller cities such as ours, I think the inventory of available options is well-known. So we, we have looked at a number of options other than this building, specifically towards six other, uh, buildings, which doesn't include other options we, we did consider that we didn't tour. This one rose to the top, uh, because as I mentioned, the Supervisor Shutey, the space is essentially configurable to the unique needs of the clerk recorder. Uh, other considerations that came into play were, were being near the community center where we anticipate, uh, continuing to have elections. So it's great proximity to that. Speaking to the IT department, uh, there's no issues there with setting up the IT infrastructure where some other, uh, locations, there would be costs upwards of $72,000, for instance, to get the, uh, the facility set up to where we could actually have a city office there. Uh, the parking became a big consideration for, uh, s- certain other facilities where they may have had the square footage, but not necessarily the amount of parking that was needed to, uh, meet the clerk recorder's requirements. It's also taking into account, uh, just the public's need for finding a location, not being somewhere that's off the beaten path, for instance, that's hard to find. Uh, this met that criteria. And with all those considerations coming into play, this did seem like the, the ideal option. Some other options that were considered were not offering, uh, to do the tenant improvements to the extent that we're looking at. That they might do certain minimal, uh, improvements, like one would expect if we were just simply moving offices and cubicles, you know, certain minimal things like, you know, carpet, uh, maybe moving a few walls, you know, paint, that sort of thing, but not to the extent that this facility is, is willing to, uh, engage with us on the tenant improvements.
So is it your, is it your plan to, uh, or, or our pin collectively to negotiate, uh, an option to extend the lease if possible? Will, will there be language? Uh, do you foresee language in there to be able to do that?
Yeah Supervisor Giomi.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we did the 63-month one, um, would, would you anticipate that there would be, uh, an option to extend included in there? And let me just add, if, if we did that, if we did the extension, would there be some consideration on the rate on the back half of that five-year? Let's say we did a, uh, an initial five with a lease, uh, option of, of a five-year extension. Would you anticipate there might be some reduction in that second five years with the thought that they would recoup some of those funds over that second period of time?
Supervisor Giomi, uh, Robert Nellis, for the record. Correct. In the 63-month option and even the 10-year option, within the lease, we would, that we would bring back to the board, there would be options to extend for either, you know, one year or two-year terms. And since the improvements, the tenant improvements would have been compressed into the 63-month period, if, if the board elected to go under that option, the lease would dramatically decrease in years six and seven, for instance, because we had already paid for the tenant improvement. So whatever the market rate would be at the time of year six and seven, under that scenario, uh, you would see a dramatic drop-off. It would not be the, you know, $2.2 per square foot per month.
No, I, I understand that. I just, I, I, I feel like that's the best option because I, I don't know that any of us really know with certainty what we're going to be looking like in five years. Uh, on the other side of the coin, um, I, you know, I want to make sure that we are thinking in terms of this being temporary and that we are going to have to come up with a solution. And having said that, and understanding that the clerk recorder has needs, and I'm not trying to discount those, um, I'm, th- this isn't a question now, it's a statement. I'm, I'm very much interested in staying within that budget, um, of what we can get for what's in this LOI or what will be in the lease. I, I, you know, uh, I don't want to start adding things to it that sort of, um, force us at the end of five years to, to throw the baby out with the bathwater because we're, we're moving and we would have made improvements that are going to get discarded when somebody else leases the building. So I, it, from my perspective, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with this. I appreciate the option and the research that you did. I, I, whatever we do in there, in my opinion, needs to fit within the budget that the TI allowance provides. And I think that's, that's a, I feel very strongly about that.
So I, I really do want to talk about this from maybe even a different perspective. And I think Supervisor Giomi touched on it a little bit when he says, who knows where we're going to be in five years or 10 years? So this board has been talking, you know, potentially about needing a new city hall by, about looking at the federal building. If the feds are willing to eliminate that building and just all the other avenues that might take place. And certainly our job here is to make sure that we're meeting the space needs for the clerk's office, but that I do that at the, uh, most cost-effective method, right? And so I don't want to block us in. And so one of the things that I did many years ago in a lease that I had that had a 10-year option, so I, I just want to think this through a little bit. So I had what I called as off-ramp. So you did a 10-year lease, but 90 days before the third year, the fifth year and the seventh year, I had an out clause. And with those out clauses, you could determine where the TI repayment. Because the one thing I don't want to do is, I heard you say at, at the end of five years renew, we go to the new market rent. Well, I don't want to do that. The new market rent could be a dollar more per. So I'm really interested in what we cannot see in this letter. But I also like something that Stacy said, that I want to nail down the price of the TI. And that's what you're saying is our job to repay is the TI and then the rest of the rent is the landlord's money that they earn for the rental and insurance and all the other things that they have to do. And so I want to And so I want to understand the component of the rate that is actually repaying the tenant improvement. So I'd like to see that as a schedule. So it doesn't matter if I go one year, two years, three years, four years, five years. That's my IO wherever I am on the tenant improvement schedule. Is there any contribution from Bank of America on the tenant improvements or is that a hundred percent us? Because I've not seen that typically in leases. They know their building has to have some. So is there any credit to us? Like, we're paying up to a million and they're contributing two hundred thousand or any any tenant improvement contributions?
Mayor Robert Ellis, for the record, for that question, I may ask Michael Dorn to come up to help answer that since he's the the owner's representative.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Mike Dorn. I work with Logic Commercial Real Estate and we represent the BOAC Limited, the owner of the building. On that question, there is a component of it. So when Bank of America left, there were issues with small issues with the electrical and then major issues with the mechanical. They've gone through over the past couple of years and taken care of all of that. The eleven, the twelve thousand one hundred and twenty feet that we're talking about has been left as is because there's not really certainty is we might get another bank user, we might get you guys. So specking portions of that weren't really in their best interest. That TI component is just for that twelve thousand one hundred and twenty feet. It's not to improve any common area mechanical or anything like that. I don't know if that answers the bulk of the question, but
No, the the question really becomes when somebody, generally speaking, moves in and rents a building, the landlord will indicate, like I said, we're we will put in as the landlord up to so I opened a business at the Carson Mall, right? So so much was on them just for tenant improvements. The rest was on me. And so my question becomes, is there any contribution that's within your two dollars and twenty cents or two ninety or whatever that might be that you're going to contribute? Because here's my concern is I looked at number eleven, the lease termination clause, tenant shall be allowed to terminate the lease upon payment of unrecovered. And so here's where I went, what? Unrecovered commissions. I'm like, what are you talking about there? I'm sorry. That's the landlord's problem unless I'm misunderstanding what unrecovered commissions, reletting costs and monetary penalty to be further defined in the lease. And so I don't mind the tenant improvement cost being identified specifically what our max is like Supervisor Giomi said, whatever our budget is, we're not going to go over that. But what are what are all these other things and I want to pay for those.
Yeah, absolutely.
That should be in the front end that's done by the landlord in my mind.
Yeah. So the with terminations, we'll typically see this for, you know, for the basics of your signing a five year lease or a ten year lease, however long that may be. Typically, lease terminations aren't a standard practice for leasing. The idea is, you know, you're in for a ten year term. They outlay their costs for a ten year term, which they absorb. And then obviously they make it back over the term and everybody goes on their merry way. When you institute these terminations, you end up with a situation where they can't accurately measure their risks and their cash flows because they don't know. Let's say, you know, you guys sign the lease, they put their million dollars into it, they get us paid and all the associated costs. And then a month later, you guys say, okay, we're out. They are basically out all those costs that were derived from you guys leaving early. So with these terminations, it's very typical that the terminating party, the tenant, bears these costs because if you want a termination option, these are the negatives that come with it. If you don't want the negatives, then they typically won't do a termination option.
Well, I'm just here to tell you, I'm not going to pay. So figure out how you can put a lease together that properly covers the costs that you need to recover, but I'm not going to pay for reletting costs. That's your cost of doing business is to say, I don't have a tenant anymore and I have to go advertise again and get a new tenant. But look to see, unless you guys see differently, I want to be able to, on behalf of this city, get the best deal and I don't want to continue to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for a space that I could repurpose into a new city hall or into a federal building. And I also understand from your side. So I would like to just have the options of coming back to us so that when you come with a final lease, that you bring us another one that's a ten year, but with a three, five and seven year off ramps. So that we can so that we have real options to look at. And then to amortize for us that tenant improvement as its own schedule. Because to me, that's where you, with the off ramps would go. You owe, PS, you owe me five hundred and twelve thousand dollars that you haven't amortized on the tenant improvements. Obviously, we owe on those. So if that makes, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, total sense. Yeah. And we can, we'll also include, we spoke on this a little bit, but because we're dealing with kind of a preliminary as far as the TIs go, this is all the data that's in here is really so you guys can accurately adjust your costs. There's not going to go over this. There's a chance that it may go under this. And our conversation with the ownership has been, all right, if if the cost goes down by fifty grand or a hundred grand, we have every intention of passing that through on the lease rate. If we, you know, if it's cheaper on our end, that lease rate's not going to stay the same. So I'm guessing that was discussed already, but just so everyone's aware, those costs are based on our real costs. And if they go down, that rent will go down.
And then I'd like to talk about item number twelve, which you indicate is a security deposit. Upon lease execution, tenant shall pay an amount equal to one month's base rent in addition to a security deposit of the first month's base rent. So that means I'm paying two months upon execution.
So this is really where it says security deposit should really say advanced costs. So upon lease signature, you would pay your first month's rent that would be applied to your first paid month. And then your security deposit that would be held throughout the term and returned to you upon lease termination.
Well, let's just in general, talk about that. So the issue becomes for me is we get the first three months for free. And we can talk about this with finance or whatever, but I just want to leave that one out as a question mark. To just I don't know about a security deposit in and of itself, like you said, and then it's applied against and I get it back at the end. I think I'd rather us just pay at the beginning of every month. So you have it a month in advance, the thirty days of that rent. So just, I'd like to leave that as an open discussion item for the final lease on how we're gonna how we're gonna address a front end payment. So just throwing that out there that I'd like to see a little further discussion in the final lease that comes forward. Anybody have anything else they want in the final lease out that we didn't cover already?
Yeah, I do. I do have another question that you sort of triggered Lori. First, I don't have a problem making a security deposit. It's pretty standard in any kind of a commercial lease where a security deposit rests with the property owner for the duration of the lease. I don't have an issue with that. But, you know, I don't know that the question you asked really got answered. You know, when you have and maybe you kind of did answer and I just didn't sort of pick up the answer. Obviously, we're paying a significant portion of the TI through the monthly lease. If you could just put on the record whether or not the owner is contributing any to the TI. And I think this is what Lori was saying, or we are, we being the city are paying all of the TI. So very typically, in a new lease, there's an obligation, obligations, wrong word, usually a desire on the part of the landlord to bring the building to sort of a plain vanilla shell status. So usually, you know, flooring, paint, things like that, because unless a bank is going to move in there, no one's going to be able to use that space as is. So if you could sort of just put on the record, is any of the TI being covered by the property owner? Or is all of it being covered by the city?
Yeah. So the totality of the TI contribution upfront is being borne by the landlord. And then it is in its entirety being amortized across the five year or the ten year term. That bump that you see from two twenty to two ninety is that amortization time period being cut in half. But the amount of TI in its entirety is being amortized under this current structure.
So absent the work that they've already done to bring the building to a point where it's even leasable from a mechanical standpoint, the property owner is not investing anything in the building that we are not reimbursing them for.
That's correct.
Fair statement?
Yes.
And why why is that?
Yeah, that was the structure that they wanted to present upfront. With these LOIs, I know it's different, the way that, you know, me talking to you is a little bit different than the way we typically do stuff. This is kind of a first shot across the bow, so to speak. LOIs are typically countered. There's two to three revisions and then we go with a, you know, a final offering. We were asked to put something together for the city. And this is what they wanted to put together as basically a first offering that they would be able to do with the expectation that there would be a response before we get to that final lease document.
I think you're getting one from us, right?
Yeah, I definitely would like to fire back just a little bit. I mean, I think there's something to continue the analogy to be said for the fact that the building as it exists has, you know, probably thirty or forty year old flooring in there. And you know, at the very least, I would like to get some contribution from the property owner on those items that will remain in place after we leave that will still benefit the property owner. And so I think it's it's critical that that get included in there along with the caveat, Robert, that we, you know, sort of stay within this. I say mystical budget because we don't have a solid number, but understanding that any money we're spending here is money that we're not going to be able to spend on an ultimate city hall, whether that be a new building or existing building in the community or the federal building. So I just, I I think you here, Robert, and Nancy, Glenn, Stephanie, what we're saying is that we we want to accomplish the things that Scott needs. At the same time, we really have to be mindful of the fact that if we're going to move forward with all this infrastructure and construction that we're going to do, that we're going to need the money to do that. And so spending money on a building that just goes away to the benefit of the property owner is is problematic for us. So I I know you all appreciate that. I just needed to put that on the record that we don't, I I'm not comfortable haphazardly spending money. And I'd like to see one, the property owner come back with a little more contribution and two, us stay within a budget that still leaves us money to be able to do the things we need to do when we get a permanent home for the clerk recorder, because this is not going to be it. And we know that. So I'm comfortable moving forward with those caveats and with the understanding that an LOI is non binding and the lease is really where the tail of the tape is and knowing this is going to come back and we're going to have to do that. But that you're going to have to do it quickly because otherwise we're not going to have the time to get, you know, Scott and his team in. And so sorry about that, but those are my thoughts.
Anybody else have any other comments?
Just for discussion, not particulars in the lease or any of that sort of stuff. I've said from the beginning, it makes no sense to move the clerk out of the courthouse. Said that from the beginning. I've seen nothing that changes my mind. Stacy makes a lot of very good points about timing, about spending money on a building we do not and will not ever own. We have a number of balls in the air that we don't even know how high they're going yet. Until we know exactly what's going on with the federal building, I cannot support a move in any direction until we know that. And even after we know that, this level of money could be spent at the courthouse or at the federal building, something that we own. I can't support this.
So let me ask, because I I might be remiss in my memory here, but the current plan for the courthouse remodel, the first dependency is the moving out of the clerk's office to start the remodel so that then the DA can, there's a domino impact. The question, I think, that Supervisor White, I'm paraphrasing him and he'll go, no, that's not what I meant, but maybe it is. I look at everything and that's kind of why I asked for a three, a seven and a a three, five and seven year off ramps. Because I I believe a little bit, a lot in what he just said. But here's my another piece of the question. If I'm spending two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, nine hundred and seventy-six, let's just say I'm looking at her fiscal impact for a year on this building, what would that give me to expand the courthouse more? How much would two hundred and thirty-nine, right? Didn't we have versions of the courthouse expansion that could have kept the clerk there? But would have taken a bigger footprint? And what that price tag was, was that going to be? One, we don't have bonding capacity for it, borrowing capacity? Or yes, we could with this two thirty-nine? I'm looking for something to tell me the why this choice is the right choice to do. Because I think he's not, I don't think Supervisor White is wrong in looking at the big picture. So that that really is the two pronged question. If I have two thirty-nine, nine seventy-six a year, thereabouts, to spend at the court, I mean, at the Bank of America building, could I do something better at the courthouse with that? And then we own it?
Mayor, for the record, Robert Ellis, we did look at the the expansion options at the courthouse. And I I apologize for not having those numbers in my head, so many different numbers on different options.
They're swirling. Notice I tried to get out of it a little bit to myself. I'm like, oh, let me try to remember.
What I can say is it was more expensive to expand the courthouse than to actually move the clerk recorder out even under a lease scenario, which is what we explored a couple of times at board retreats with all of you is you know, whether we want to pursue the expansion option. For some reason, I have eleven million in my head. I don't remember if that's the right number to it might be square footage, eleven thousand square feet. I can't recall. But that was definitely a more expansion expensive option to build three, a three story expansion. There were multiple versions of that, but it still was about the same to keep the clerk recorder there. This was definitely the less expensive option to move the clerk recorder out. And you're correct in that the clerk recorder is the first piece that needs to happen. Once the clerk recorder can vacate that first floor, the next step would be to design that space for the district attorney's office. So they could then move down. When that district attorney's office is free, then we're able to have the clerk of the court and the courtroom redesign so they can occupy that space that was vacated. So yes, it's all
A domino.
Yeah, it all, this is really the first piece that needs to move forward to accomplish all of that.
And that is correct today. The clerk vacating the courthouse is the first piece. But that's because that's how the pieces were put on the table. They didn't have to be put on the table that way. Except that there's been a driving force to move the clerk out of the courthouse from the beginning. And it makes no sense to do that.
Supervisor White, what what are you recommending then at the courthouse? Something space, I'm going to laugh and say, you know that library question you had about space? So so talk to me about if we're not moving the clerk out and doing the dominos, what what was the other option or something that you saw that was more favorable in where you're looking at this space needs at the courthouse?
I don't believe leaving the clerk at the courthouse has ever been properly considered. So there's, I don't think there's an answer to that. The space is available. The air is there. We have The space is available, the air is there, we have an entire patio out in front of the courthouse that could be used, the entire thing. And so far, I've never seen any plans that include the clerk staying there. So it hasn't, I don't believe it's been properly explored to this point.
Did we not explore that option that Robert just mentioned?
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Yeah, we explored the expansion out into the patio area to the north, and that was the price tag that was.
Right, because the initial conversation was.
That expansion did not include the clerk.
I believe it did. The initial expansion was going to be south, and then we discussed at length other ideas. And then we looked at an expansion to the north, and the initial idea, in my memory, was everything as a whole, and due to costs, we are now looking at other options, if I'm remembering correctly.
That's correct, Supervisor Shutey. The expansion, that was ultimately the preferred expansion, was to the north, and it was a three-story expansion. The first level would be room for the clerk recorder to expand out, and then second and third levels would be for all the other departments in the courthouse to expand as well. So that includes the DA's office and the clerk of the court. So there was plenty of room in that expansion to keep everyone there. It's just the expense of doing that.
So I guess if money wasn't an issue, that was the ideal option. And so there lies the dilemma. What can we afford? What is the best next step potentially?
Sheri, maybe you can remind us. Again, all I'm looking for is, could I put this 239 to the courthouse expansion and keep the clerk there? That's the real, to me, that's the question of the day.
Yeah, I feel like when. More than the 239, we own it.
I feel like when we looked at expanding that footprint of the courthouse, it took away quite a bit of their parking, and that was a big problem, because then they got the courts, the elections, everybody wouldn't have any place to park. So I think that was a big part of not increasing the footprint. But that's what I remember anyway, and I'm getting old, so. But, so we can bond, but not until 2031. So if we bond now, which we can always rapid and only pay interest for a few years, but that's really not a cost-effective way to bond, because, you know, you're not paying principal, you're paying a lot of interest upfront. So we can, I'm not, you know, saying you can't do that, you can. It's just not the most cost-effective way. And I think the plan that we're, path we're going down is the most cost-effective way. If we do get the federal building we're talking about, it makes sense to try to get out of the lease within three years so that they can, we can all be in one, you know, City Hall building. Yeah, I mean, I think between Public Works and everybody, we've looked at this five ways to Sunday, but trying to figure out the best way to do this, and it lasts a long time. So in five years, we're not looking at this again.
Ms. Paulson?
Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time we were looking at figures to do that expansion that would have kept everyone at the courthouse, it was upwards of $30 million. It's kind of the latest number. And then also, I thought someone was going to have to move out anyway while they were doing the construction? Do I have that right?
Robert Ellis, for the record, the 30 million, yeah, 29 million does sound familiar-ish. I'd have to go back and look at the latest numbers. We ran on that, that was a while back, and I don't even know if they're accurate anymore. I don't recall having to move anyone out while that was under construction. The hope was that perhaps, you know, it would still be noise mitigation involved, but as we add on to the courthouse, we're not interrupting current operations within the courthouse, and that eventually we would add on and open up that space for folks to be able to move in. But, yes, your 30 million number may be correct. I'd have to go back and look at what that.
That certainly wasn't just for the clerk.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Mayor, you know, can I make one more comment? We're not, I mean, we're essentially providing direction now on what we want to see in a lease. We're not even approving a lease. We're just providing direction to staff. I, you know, perhaps we've given them, in my opinion, we've given them enough direction to move forward. The lease can or cannot be approved in the future if it comes back to us and we don't agree with it. But at that same time, the numbers that we're throwing around, that we're pulling out of thin air right now, because we don't all remember, can be re-presented, and we'll have a full picture. But I'm fairly confident that moving forward with a lease makes the most sense. But it's just opinion at this point until we finalize that lease. So I believe we provided enough direction to have them move forward with this and go to next steps, is my opinion.
Let me see if there's any public comment on this item. So I do the legal, no one? Okay. Do, I don't know that we actually need a motion because we're not adopting it as submitted of this, but do you have enough direction and understanding from comments of what we're looking for, or do you need more?
Mayor, Robert Ellis, for the record. Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, do they, do they, does the property owner need us to sign the LOI in order to move forward?
Yeah, no, no, we don't. And the expectation would be when you guys have a response, they're going to get on us of, you know, we don't really want to bid against ourselves 15 times. If the city has a response of what they want to see, we're happy to take that, we'll present it, and then next go around, we can have that inserted into a lease so everybody can review it. But from our end, the best course of action would be to see an actual response of, this is where we want the rate to be, this is what we want to see from this, this is what we want to see from that, and that will allow us to much more accurately get everything together so we can provide that back to you.
Mayor, Robert Ellis, for the record, just a couple of thoughts on if the board is able to provide direction on whether you may be interested in either the 63-month term or 120-month, then we could look at these various off-ramps and costs, you know, for early termination. We could also itemize for the board, to Supervisor Giomi's point and others on, I don't think, and Mike and I have talked about this a lot, we don't want to pay for basic improvements to the building that would be HVAC, electric, plumbing, that they would have to make for any tenant. So we just want to pay for the costs that are unique to the clerk recorder moving in. So what would be helpful is if the board's able to provide us with some direction on either a shorter-term or longer-term lease, we could go back to negotiate that with the owner and then itemize all those costs for you and what, again, early termination looks like and what their investment looks like, what we would be paying for exactly, so.
Well, I think, I think we pretty much commented to you that you could look potentially at a 10-year with those off-ramps, at three years, five years, and seven years. That gives this board the options of exiting the lease at any appropriate time that it would take us to build something else, to move into something else, right, without tying our hands. And I think that's what I'm most interested in. And then, again, the schedule, I want to see the, I'm concerned, I want to be able to see the amortization of the tenant improvements. I don't want it buried within this rate that I can't see what's being applied to the TIs, because that, to me, is, they're not early terminations, they're, if, here's your 10-year lease, here's your rate for each year of the 10-year lease, if you leave at year three, I don't know, with 90 days notice, whatever, whatever you guys negotiate there, here's your payout that you owe us for unamortized tenant improvements, right? Because the rest, you're already going to do within your rate, and so they're going to get recovery no matter what, it's just the speed in which they get recovery, and they already told me they were willing to go 10 years to recover their TIs. So if you just do a TI schedule and say, out of the $2.20, 80 cents is applied to TI, I don't know, whichever way, however that works, that's what I'm interested in seeing. Is that work for all of us, what we're interested in? And the rest, like I said, we already talked about, so does that help you with what we're looking for?
Quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah? Does that work? Stacy? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that I agree with a three-year. I don't think we're going to be anywhere near ready to do anything in three years. That's just my opinion. I feel like it might unnecessarily raise the cost to us, but, you know, that Robert's original discussion about the 63-month with the one-year or two-year-at-a-pop renewals at a, then, rate seems more realistic to me. So, you know, I'm in a little bit of disagreement with you there, Mayor, but I do agree with you that we should be breaking out what their costs are in terms of what they're doing for the TI, and what TI is our responsibility to pay off, whether we pay that off in five years, or six years, or seven years, or three years, to your point. You know, I can, I can live with that. But what I'm really interested in is having it call out their contribution and our contribution owed, perhaps by the end of the 63-month period, and whether we, you know, pay that out over time, or we pay it out at year four to get out of the lease, or to end it, then maybe that, that is an option too.
I'm not sure I understand, then, what, we need a schedule with the TIs, and that's your termination is the payoff of the TI. I think that's what we're all saying.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, that's what we're saying.
Sorry. We can get you a schedule, and then however you guys want to slice it.
Right.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. All right. We're good, we're good. You have enough information to move forward? Okay, then we're going to thank you very much, and we'll see where we can land. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now on, let's see, Agenda Item 21, Finance. 21A, this is a resolution for the temporary inter-fund loan that we do at the end of every year, because it's a reimbursement account. Does any member of the board have a question on 21A, our inter-fund loan? No questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Supervisor Shutey?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-14.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was four yeses. We're now on to Agenda Item 21B. This is our resolution to augment and amend the Carson City Fiscal Year 2425 budget in the amount of $7,202,388, again, our year-end normal processes. Did anyone have a question for Sheri on any of the specific augmentations? Nobody? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-R-15.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Thank you. Let the record reflect, that was four yeses. We're now on to Agenda Item 21C. This is discussion of possible action on the Community Development Block Grant for 2526 Action Plan. Ms. Russell, the only thing I noted, working through this plan, all the dates and things will be updated for the final to reflect the actual.
Absolutely.
Activities that are happening on this. Did anybody else have?
Absolutely, and just to update you, there's been no comment as of today.
That was my next question. Anybody else have any? Supervisor White?
I noticed on page 591, right there at the very top, that it states that we now have two most teams, however, we do have three.
I can update that as well. That will, yeah, in 2026, we would have three. Yeah, so I'll update that as well.
I think that's it, other than, when do we finally get to Carmine Street? It's been in, it's been out, it's been in and out again. When do we finally get to Carmine Street?
Last I talked to Public Works, they are going to start it this fall. Unless something happens, it'll be very early spring.
Okay.
We approved Carmine in RTC, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've been talking to them because we need to use the CDBG money we already set aside for Carmine Street as soon as possible, and so they understand that's a concern, and so I think they're trying to do it this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Who's on our report? I think Supervisor White, if you're ever looking for that, we have a report in RTC at the back end of the agenda every other month that has the status of every single project and Carmine, and I think you've got the dates pretty close to right, but those are on there and that project's approved and moving forward. So I just can't remember the exact date in the little box, it's trying there. Is there any public comment, as this is a public hearing for CDBG? No? Okay, I'll bring it back here then for a motion.
I can do it. I move to approve the 2526 Annual Action Plan as presented.
As discussed.
As discussed on the record, yes, thank you, with the corrections, thanks.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, that was four yeses. We're now on to 21D, and this is regarding a resolution to do the renaming for the account to now be called Neighborhood Improvement Districts, since we earlier took the action today to change the downtown need to be run by the city. Does any member have a question? Nope. Is there any public comment on this item? Just one less fund for Sheri. Okay, I'll accept a motion then. Supervisor Shutey?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, that was four zero. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item 22, which is our non-action items, and so I guess we will, we will start it off with, it is Nancy's last meeting, so do you have any profound words to share with us as your last report?
I didn't really have anything for my last report, other than it's been an amazing 26 and a half years with Carson City, and I've enjoyed, you know, our twice-a-month board meetings, and I'll miss all of the board members and the employees of Carson City, so thank you for a good run.
We were trying to have it be a surprise, and how did we do? We did pretty, see, we did pretty good, and I thought, where can we legally even do this? Uh-oh, this is taped in there really well, but we wanted, we really wanted you to always remember your central place is Carson City. So we have one little smaller for you, obviously, than the 20-footer in the roundabout, so we really just want to say congratulations, have a happy retirement, and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Right? So now you're stuck with us, though, because that'll be in your house somewhere, hopefully.
There you go. I love it, thank you.
Pretty special, and then I think, Mahala, did you have something? Weren't you reading something? Did Dan fail? Uh-oh. I thought you were reading something for Dan U. No?
No? Mahala is pretending to be Dan U, who wanted to, oh, well, he emailed me or texted me that she was going to read something, that he was writing for you, but he wishes you nothing but success and good luck.
He's still writing it for you.
She's gonna laugh.
Yeah. If you're listening.
There you go, there you go.
Mahala Niagus, for the record, I know Dan is so eloquent, but on behalf of our office, I would like to express, you know, congratulations on your retirement, and our thanks for working with us so closely, and being so supportive, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. I'm sure you're going to join one of our boards probably soon.
Yeah.
Or commissions.
The Audit Committee, oh, oh, sorry.
And this did not come from Dan U, but.
There you go.
For the supervisor.
Just kidding.
Okay.
Who's board am I in, Stacy's?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're in my board, so, you know, if you think you got it in, you bring it on Nancy.
Yeah.
No, I, can I just add, Mayor, can I just add, I, I, when I took over as Fire Chief, Nancy and I worked closely together in the Fire Department, because, you know, it, the, ambulance budget is always, at the time, was always in a deficit position, and we were always trying to find, you know, ways to, to, to keep it afloat and not spend city money, and I, I just appreciate, all through Nancy's time, both in finance and as a city manager, the fact that she kept her sights focused on what was best for our community, and how tirelessly dedicated she was to her job as city manager, and to the functioning of a quality city government. And it is no small feat to do that with the personalities that are on this board, and with the strength that we have at our director level, and our constitutionally elected officers, to balance all of those things, and do it professionally, with a smile on her face, and in a way that always served the best interest of this community, is no small task. And so my heartfelt thanks to her for her time doing that, and for her service to this community over those 20, whatever years it was Nancy had forgotten, 26, 28, 280, whatever it may be.
Old.
And the fact that I, the fact that I know you're going to still be in the community, and, and you will find a way to contribute even more in the future. I really appreciate you and the sacrifices you made for your efforts. Thank you.
Okay.
Stacy?
Go ahead, Shutey.
And Nancy, you know, you have just been really such an advocate for a culture of cooperation, of working together, of finding the way forward, helping people have the tools to address the needs, to meet the objectives, to meet that mission, and that's tough to do, because there's always different ideas. And so thank you for your leadership, and that spirit of cooperation, and, and working with city employees to, to bring out the best in them, so thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, go ahead Stephanie.
Thank you. Sorry Nancy, I know how much you hate being in the spotlight, but we couldn't let this day go without thanking you for all your guidance and leadership over the years, not just the nine years that I've been with the city, but the 26 that you have, and I extend that on behalf of all of our employees. You've always tried to be extremely consistent and fair in everything that you do, and you have definitely made the city a better place, so thank you.
Thanks, everyone. For some reason, I wasn't even prepared for all this.
See, we, we did pull it off. We were trying hard. We were, I know. I even had to have the present mailed to my home, because I thought, shoot, one of those staff will open it, and Nancy will walk right by as she's, right, I'm like, nope, send it to my house. So again, congratulations. I know you and your family will have a grand time, right? Plans, she likes to travel. So is there any other items under? Nothing? Okay.
Can I just briefly, Lori?
Sure.
We had our Carson Water Subconservancy District meeting this week, and I just wanted to share that we, you know, we travel county to county, and we went to Churchill County. And one of our board members is Miles Ghetto, who's on the Clark County Commission, but he's a farmer by trade, and his family has been farming in, since the early 1900s. And I'm just continually impressed with the, the farming community in Fallon. We've toured a couple of farms over the last several years, and they're so innovative, and you don't, you don't necessarily think of innovation in farming if you're not in that world, but so Miles and his team distribute, really, the whole world, a product called TEFF, T-E-F-F, which is a gluten-free flour-like substance that is originally from Ethiopia. And, you know, who would have thought in Little O'Fallon that they're distributing these products worldwide? But it's, it's available locally, I, I don't have, Lisa, do you remember the name of the Desert Oasis? It's a desert oasis farming, so if you look that up online, you can order this TEFF flour, naturally gluten-free flour, and I just found it remarkable that, that I had no idea that this was even a thing here in the US. So it was just fascinating, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, then we're going to move to final public comment for the Board of Supervisors. Okay, seeing none, if there's no objection, then we'll adjourn as the Board of Supervisor, and I'll call to order the Redevelopment Authority. May I have a roll call, please?
Chair Bagwell?
Here.
Vice Church Giomi?
Here.
Member White?
Here.
Member Shutey?
Here.
Member Horton?
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll go to opening public comment for the Redevelopment Authority. Don't see any, we'll move on. Then will, anybody have any changes for the May 27 minutes? No changes, I'll accept a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes for the Redevelopment Authority for May 27, 2025, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Supervisor White. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was four zero. We're now on to Agenda Item 29A, which is discussion of possible action regarding the resolution to augment the Redevelopment Authority for $25,000. Again, our standard ending. Anyone have any questions on this? Pretty, not big, only $25,000, but anyway, we'll take it, right? Take any pennies or shekels we can come up with. Is there any public comment? This item? No? I'll take a motion then. Supervisor Shutey?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-A-R-2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, the vote was four zero, one absent. We're now on to final public comment for the Redevelopment Authority. Do I have any? I can see where that went, right out the door. So the answer's no. Okay. Okay, then if there's no objection, we are adjourned as the Redevelopment Authority. Stacy, have a grand time for the rest of your day now.
I will, thank you all.